Good evening. I would like to call the May 21st, 2013 Longmont City Council Meeting to Order. This is a regular session. Could we please start with the roll call?
Yes, Mayor Coombs.
President.
Councilmember Bagley.
Here.
Thinly.
Present.
Levison.
Here.
Samori.
Here.
Santos.
Here.
Mayor Coombs, we have a form.
All right. Anyone wishing to speak at first call, public invited to be heard, need to add his or her name to the list outside the council chambers. Only those on the list will be invited to speak at the first public invited to be heard. Speakers who do not place their names on that list will have an opportunity to speak during public hearing items this evening or at the final call public invited to be heard on any item at the end of the meeting. I'm going to move the, uh, yes.
Let's be patriotic.
Oh, yes. Yes, you're right. I, let's stand for pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Bagley. Anyway, I'm going to move the public invited to be heard ahead of our special reports today. We have minutes to approve from the May 7th. Are there any corrections or additions to be made? Councilmember Witt?
I would like to move the minutes from May 7th.
Take it.
Okay, all in, or let's go over to vote. Yes.
I'm not going to vote since I wasn't here.
Okay, you're right. Okay, it's six to zero with Alex Samori not voting because he was absent. Sorry, are there any agenda revisions or submissions of documents?
Yes, Mayor Coombs, there are. Ordinance 2013-25, Amending Municipal Code Regarding Fireworks was added to your agenda. It will be on consent, item 9K. And along with that, there was a revised ordinance for that item placed at your desk tonight. Basically, the content remains the same. There was just some incorrect analysis on the second page, item number four. That's already exist in code language. Then there was also a letter from the applicant for consent agenda 9E, the North Star Annexation and Concept Plan. That was delivered to council last week. Just wanted to let you know it wasn't part of the original packet. And then also tonight, there was an appendix B Municipal Actions and Elections for the Marijuana Prohibitions placed at your desk tonight. So that's 9A, and staff will have a presentation on that.
Okay. Okay, let's start with public invited to be heard. Ryan Craig, and I'll start with your last name. Craig?
Brian, press button. Press the number. There you go. Button, there we go. We're on. My name is Ryan Craig. I live at 615 Lincoln Street in Old Town, Longmont. And I'm here to express bicycle Longmont's support for the new integrated, for the integrated healthy living and active lifestyle portion within our Longmont Area Comprehensive Plan. And basically, all our comments are right in line with what is in front of you this evening. The focus on infrastructure as well as projects and increasing opportunities for folks to get out there and be active is something that we really believe strongly in at Bicycle Longmont. And, you know, just in, in short, we were a part of the Parks Master Plan that's been going on right now that I think is going to be coming to the Parks Advisory Board as well as other planning processes for the Pavlocas Open Space piece, as well as the city's strategic plan that it was doing as well. And in all of those different situations, we saw a record amount of people come out in support of cycling. And so I think that the Longmont Area Comprehensive Plan is now catching up with where the populace of Longmont is. And I also believe that what's in front of you this evening is good for business. I think there are a number of employers in Longmont that are now including wellness and getting their employees active within their businesses as well. One of those is one that I'm a big fan of, which is Oscar Blues. They employ a CrossFit gym as a part of their wellness programs. The Zamburin Valley School District where I work has a very robust wellness program as well. And they're helping to get a lot of us that work behind our desks out and enjoying the green light, which is right, you know, behind our offices as well. So Bicycle Longmont supports this. We think it's a good thing, and we hope that you all do too. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ryan. Denise Davis? Is there Denise Davis here? All right, Paul Renix?
Mayor Coombs, City Council, thanks for the chance to speak. Paul Renix, over the 21th, 28th, 24th in Longmont. I spoke here last week and gonna say a lot of the same stuff. I know we've got a new member here, and I hear there's talk of a voter, voters having a choice here. I'm pretty psyched about that. Longmont voters did vote to regulate marijuana-like alcohol. That's 45 precincts for Amendment 64, one tie and 10 against. It's pretty, uh, big numbers in voting for anything. Given the results, it seems there's really only one choice for Longmont. Voters have chosen to regulate like alcohol. They've decided to have you figure out what regulation Longmont needs in excess of the regulations that our state representatives just figured out. It's been a long time, I remember, hashing this out and figuring out what needs to happen for Colorado. What that really will come down to for Longmont is probably going to be zoning, issues like signage, how a business would be decorated, where it would be in town, kind of like we would do with a liquor store. That's what the voters voted for. Governor Hickenlooper, ironically, a guy who's made his living, most of his living, most of his life selling alcohol and brewing beer, was very against Amendment 64. And even so, we had an election, and he looked at the numbers and decided that the voters made, made a pretty clear choice, and they spoke very loudly on Election Day. So he put together a task force to make recommendations to the legislature. The task force spent weeks, I know some people that were on it, and worked very hard to make, make sure that we did this right. Anyway, the legislature took those recommendations and crafted legislation for Colorado. This isn't a thing with medical marijuana 10 years ago where we were all worried about what our towns would look like with, with these things happening. It all sprouted up overnight. There was no regulations. Ugly businesses came to Longmont. Ugly businesses came to Boulder. Ugly businesses came to Fort Collins. That said, now we have a chance to do it right, and that's what I think your job is. And I look forward to you guys using your heads and, and looking at what the voters did and figuring out how to do it right for Longmont. It's harder than just banning, obviously, but I think you can do it. We can't afford to send away the tax money. We can't afford to send away the jobs, the business opportunities for Longmont entrepreneurs. Longmont has some key benefits for these businesses, namely cost-effective utilities, unused industrial space that could have, that could lure new businesses and, and Longmont needs. It's not just a few retail shops we'd be pushing out. It would be grow facilities, test facilities, processing, packaging, edible manufacturers, not to mention all of the existing Longmont businesses that would serve these newcomers. Accountants, landlords, construction contractors, all types of suppliers.
Your turn, this is up, sorry. Thank you. John Wood, please.
Good evening, Mayor Coombs and members of the council. John Wood, 975 Wells Farm Lane, right here in Longmont. We're on. My name is Ryan Craig, and I live at 615 Lincoln Street in Old Town Longmont, and I'm here to express bicycle Longmont's support for the new integrated, for the integrated healthy living and active lifestyle portion within our Longmont area comprehensive plan. And basically, all our comments are right in line with what is in front of you this evening. The focus on infrastructure as well as projects and increasing opportunities for folks to get out there and be active is something that we really believe strongly in at Bicycle Longmont. And, you know, just in, in short, we were a part of the Parks Master Plan that's been going on right now that I think is going to be coming to the Parks Advisory Board as well as other planning processes for the Pavlocas Open Space piece, as well as the city's strategic plan that it was doing as well. And in all of those different situations, we saw a record amount of people come out in support of cycling. And so I think that the Longmont Area Comprehensive Plan is now catching up with where the populace of Longmont is. And I also believe that what's in front of you this evening is good for business. I think there are a number of employers in Longmont that are now including wellness and getting their employees active within their businesses as well. One of those is one that I'm a big fan of, which is Oscar Blues. They employ a CrossFit gym as a part of their wellness programs. The Zamburin Valley School District where I work has a very robust wellness program as well, and they're helping to get a lot of us that work behind our desks out and enjoying the green light, which is right, you know, behind our offices as well. So Bicycle Longmont supports this. We think it's a good thing, and we hope that you all do too. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ryan. Denise Davis? Is there Denise Davis here? All right, Paul Renix?
Mayor Coombs, City Council, thanks for the chance to speak. Paul Renix over at 212824 in Longmont. I spoke here last week and gonna say a lot of the same stuff. I know we've got a new member here, and I hear there's talk of a voter, voters having a choice here. I'm pretty psyched about that. Longmont voters did vote to regulate marijuana-like alcohol. That's 45 precincts for Amendment 64, one tie, and 10 against. It's pretty, uh, big numbers in voting for anything. Given the results, it seems there's really only one choice for Longmont. Voters have chosen to regulate like alcohol. They've decided to have you figure out what regulation Longmont needs in excess of the regulations that our state representatives just figured out. It's been a long time, I remember, hashing this out and figuring out what needs to happen for Colorado. What that really will come down to for Longmont is probably going to be zoning, issues like signage, how a business would be decorated, where it would be in town, kind of like we would do with the liquor store. That's what the voters voted for. Governor Hickenlooper, ironically, a guy who's made his living, most of his living, most of his life selling alcohol and brewing beer, was very against Amendment 64. And even so, we had an election, and he looked at the numbers and decided that the voters made, made a pretty clear choice, and they spoke very loudly on Election Day. So he put together a task force to make recommendations to the legislature. The task force spent weeks, I know some people that were on it, and worked very hard to make, make sure that we did this right. Anyway, the legislature took those recommendations and crafted legislation for Colorado. This isn't a thing with medical marijuana 10 years ago where we were all worried about what our towns would look like with, with these things happening. It all sprouted up overnight, there was no regulations. Ugly businesses came to Longmont. Ugly businesses came to Boulder. Ugly businesses came to Fort Collins. That said, now we have a chance to do it right, and that's what I think your job is. And I look forward to you guys using your heads and, and looking at what the voters did and figuring out how to do it right for Longmont. It's harder than just banning, obviously, but I think you can do it. We can't afford to send away the tax money. We can't afford to send away the jobs, the business opportunities for Longmont entrepreneurs. Longmont has some key benefits for these businesses, namely cost-effective utilities, unused industrial space that could have, that could lure new businesses, and, and Longmont needs. It's not just a few retail shops we'd be pushing out. It would be growth facilities, test facilities, processing, packaging, edible manufacturers, not to mention all of the existing Longmont businesses that would serve these newcomers. Accountants, landlords, construction contractors, all types of supply.
Your turn, this is up, sorry. Thank you. John Wood, please.
Good evening, Mayor Coombs and members of the council. John Wood, 975 Wells Farm Lane, right here in Longmont. I want, Paul, pretty, my friend Paul Renix pretty much reiterated the majority of what I have to say in terms of facts, but I want to add on a few things. Standing third row right here is a gentleman, Bill Hickey, who wants to add a refutable business right here in Longmont for many years, for, for doing steel manufacturing. He wants to bring it, he, he has a building right here in Longmont, which he could open up a growth facility and do it with a full responsibility and with great respect to the community, and he could bring right immediately over 100 jobs. And that's immediate revenue to Longmont. And also reiterate, 68% of all voters here in Longmont voted for Amendment 64. We're talking over two-thirds right off the bat, two of every three people. And, but again, since the voters already stated their case properly, the real, the real request here from me is to do this with responsibility. In other words, have all businesses mentioning the aforementioned zoning regulations, and also this, also doing everything in the sense that with, really, it comes down to like life, moderation and regulation. And you can bring in, you can bring these businesses that can bring in revenue that is currently going to Boulder, to Lyons, and to Louisville, for example. Three towns there doing very well with medical marijuana dispensary businesses. And finally, all my side things I do is I'm a banjo player. Two years ago, I played at the Pearl Street Pub in Longmont, and, and while I was singing a song, I had two people that were dancing that were far under the influence of alcohol who immediately smashed into my microphone and also smashed into a, a, excuse me, a container of water that spilled on my friend's harmonica case who was playing next to me. In my 48-plus years in the plant, I've yet to see anybody strictly under the influence of alcohol, under the influence of marijuana, do any of those sort of actions. So again, it really comes down to, please, when you do this, please do this with responsibility and with the utmost of respect to the city of Longmont. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Gregory. John.
Good evening to everybody, mayor, council. I'm one of the family physicians at the Salud Family Health Center here in Longmont. It's a federally qualified health center that we have here. And I'm here representing my center and my administration that manages nine community health centers throughout northern Colorado. I'm here, here in Longmont, we have an active practice of about 15,000 patients that have an active, ongoing care to about 4,000 medical and careers monthly. The practice is largely uninsured, underinsured, poor people, the disenfranchised. I'm here tonight to endorse 100%, the Longmont Area Comprehensive Plan on Wellness and Health. I assume that you've had some kind of documents that you've examined for that. The demographic that we serve at Salud has a larger proportion of chronic disease that is directly related to the points that are brought out by that, the plan, namely access to quality foods, safe and affordable venues for exercise and activity. We're experiencing an epidemic in diabetes and childhood obesity here in Longmont and other locations. The phenomenon is well documented. The concept is actually termed healthcare disparities. And this plan will address this problem. The thoughtful plan that's put forth and developed largely on the vagueness of the Boulder County Health Department will add to the momentum of the movement that's present already in the community. There's several organizations that are working in that, in that same plan. It has merit and deserves the council and city's support. The city has in the past been proactive in issues like this, investing in, for example, the community health, the community services has sponsored the Longmont Multicultural Action Plan and also the Latino Task Force. Both of these projects have been proactive in community outreach programs as well as needs assessments. So also, I mentioned, the city has a legacy of engaging civic and community participation, specifically back in Julia Purnak's term, a lot of sustainable projects still maintained, and they do the same kind of things that we're doing here. So I encourage you to look at the plan and consider it.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Paul Tiger?
Paul Tiger, 452 Dixon. I didn't even notice that you guys were doing marijuana again. I've been pretty busy, and you've never done marijuana, okay. I've done enough, I've done enough for everyone here. I'm, I'm pretty busy opening my store at 634 Main and Sophie and going back there in a couple of minutes. So actually, I came tonight to talk a little bit about, I think some of you have seen some emails from me, and by the way, thanks again for Third and Alpine. I don't want to have criticism here without that. That's, that was really awesome. Anyway, the, the issue has to do with police officers not understanding how ordinances are passed or how rules are made, how things go on in the city. This has been a talk with code enforcement and city manager's office about it, and eventually Mike will become involved, I don't know. Some of the, the officers who come to this chamber and provide security actually do know what's going on and how it all works. But what's happened is, is I run in yet to yet another person who says, "Well, there are people out with leaf blowers making noises at 3:00 in the morning." And I call the city, and the police go down there and talk to them, and then the noise comes back on. Why? Because they told the officer that they were doing work for the city and that they had a pass. Last, and the last summer, we had this incident where they were paving the road over in Weaver Park, and I live two blocks away, and the sound of the gravel trucks, the gravel running out of the trucks was pretty intense at 3:00 in the morning. And they told the officer that they had a pass from the streets and sanitation to do that. And I talked to streets, and they didn't give anybody a pass. I talked to engineering, they didn't give anybody a pass because they know how it works. In order for there to be an exemption, you have to vote on it, unless it's already in there that says that there's a director or someone who can do that. But for noise ordinances, that doesn't exist. And so we have folks out there that are doing work, and the cops come along responding to a citizen's complaint, and what they get, the feedback is, "We don't need a permit," or, "We, that we have a pass on that." A few weekends ago, I ran into a, an operation going on down here in the middle of town, and the same thing, when I asked people if they had the types of permits that my business has, they told me they didn't need them, and the planning and zoning department gave them a free ride. We know those things aren't true. I would like for our police to understand that there are no imaginary free passes. Should they see one, they, they want to see an ordinance. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I was supposed to put this sheet pretty early. If there's anybody here that would like to speak on the housing task force, the workforce housing task force, before we had the presentation, they, now's the time to come up. Okay? Sure. Come on. Please state your name and address, please.
March Sofield, 1813 South Coffin Street. I actually want to return, if that's all right, to the comprehensive plan discussions. I was a member of the working group that identified and formulated the concepts that were advanced in the draft chapter and the revised chapter that you have been considering for the plan. And I was asked to serve on that working group because of my experience as the architect for the Prospect subdivision, which was designed along many of the principles that are incorporated in those draft chapters. One striking aspect of the experience of working with that group was the commitment of all the members of the group, citizens and staff, to the process, but more importantly, to the city. Each, each member of that group had their own area of interest and expertise, but all our discussions were driven by deep commitment to the fiscal health of the city and to the physical health and happiness of its citizens, which we saw as inextricably linked. My own interest in serving on that group, my and how planning decisions and strategies and implementation can affect health outcomes, access to healthy foods, or increasing opportunities for physical activity through routine daily activities like commuting or shopping. On a more global level, though, I feel that a comprehensive plan is a great way for a city to advertise itself to potential residents and businesses, and that the long-term prosperity of the city depends on its ability to attract both of those types of investors. Boulder is the healthiest county and the healthiest state by many metrics, as I'm sure you've heard. And I feel strongly that, that Longmont should leverage that distinction to the greatest extent possible in attracting investment, and that the comp plan is a great, as a visionary document for the city's future, is a great way to make that happen. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Yeah, just a little close, public invited to be heard. I'll reserve one more.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks, council members. My name's Jeff Sayak, and I'm the Public Health Director with Boulder County Public Health. And I know that your Comprehensive Health and Wellness Chapter item is on the consent agenda, but I did want to let you know that if you had any questions, we have multiple members in the audience tonight that can answer any of the questions on that. And I also wanted to lend, as the Public Health Director, my full support for that chapter as you consider it moving forward. I think you, most of you know that we've been significantly engaged in that, and we've provided your planning and zoning board with lots of information. We're happy to provide any of that information to you. This is a significant issue for us. We know it's a significant issue for you. As I was at the work session, I had heard several comments about what the city's role is and what the county's role is. So I am going to, since this is, is on the consent agenda, I'm going to take that opportunity to try to provide some feedback in writing as well before the next reading so that all of you get some of that same information. But in the interim, please, please do take advantage if you have questions for us tonight. There's several of us in the audience. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. All right, move on to city manager. Is there a report from the city manager?
Uh, no, sir.
All right. Next, we have a proclamation designating May as Historic Preservation Month in Longmont. Do we have a member of the Longmont Historic Preservation Commission here? Okay, does that come forward? I'll go ahead and read the proclamation. Proclamation designating May 2013 as Historic Preservation Month in Longmont, Colorado, whereas historic preservation is an effective tool for revitalizing neighborhoods, fostering local pride, and maintaining community character while enhancing livability, and whereas historic preservation is relevant for communities across the nation, both urban and rural, and for Americans of all age, all walks of life, and all ethnic backgrounds, and whereas is important to celebrate the roles of history in our lives and the contributions made by dedicated individuals in helping to preserve the tangible aspects of the heritage that has shaped us as a people, and whereas "See, Save, Celebrate" is the theme for Historic Preservation Month 2013, co-sponsored by the Longmont Historic Preservation Commission and the National Trust for Historic Preservation. Now, therefore, I, Dennis Alcoams, mayor by the virtue of authority vested in me, and the city council of the city of Longmont, do hereby proclaim May 2013 as Historic Preservation Month in Longmont, and call upon the residents of our community to join their fellow citizens across the United States in recognizing and participating in the special observance. So would you like to make some statements?
I just want to say thank you to you and to the other council members, and one thing I want to highlight is that this year, for the first time ever, we held a historic fair in February, and we're hoping that maybe that continues over the next years and gets bigger and kind of helps the public to see all the wonderful things that Longmont has regarding its history. And my name is Kimberly Schulte, I'm the chair of the commission.
Okay, thank you, Kimberly. Let's come forward, and we'll take a picture.
Thank you.
Mayor, while you're walking back, I'll introduce the next item, which is Presentation and Discussion with Council on Recommendations of the Workhouse Workforce Housing Task Force, and Kathy Fedler is here to start the presentation.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Kathy Fedler, CDBG Coordinator for the city. In November of 2011, a 22-member workforce housing task force, representing a diverse cross-section of the community, was appointed by the city council and has been working since January of 2012. The purpose of the task force was to look at future strategies to determine the need for affordable housing in Longmont to house our workforce and to make recommendations to council on how to address that need. The recommendations are going to be presented to you tonight. Each and every recommendation in this report was approved by a majority of the task force members. Most were reached under consensus, but all of the recommendations were supported by a majority of the task force. Staff would like to acknowledge the hard and dedicated work of the task force members. They met for a total of 16 months, meeting monthly from January 2012 through January 2013, then every other week from February through May. Each member provided an average of about 74 hours during this period, resulting in about 1,175-person hours. In addition, task force members worked in subcommittees, and additional eight to 32 hours of time was probably spent by each member. During the course of the work, they worked to educate themselves thoroughly on the housing needs of the community so they could all come from about the same level of knowledge. Guest speakers were brought in to discuss various parts of the city's development process, and housing developers provided information on their business models. A third-party independent consultant was chosen by the task force to provide additional analysis of the housing needs and gaps impacting the workforce in our community. This analysis formed the backbone for the recommendations of this group. The task force tonight will highlight the important points and recommendations that it wishes council to consider. I want to point out the task force did intend their recommendations to offer a more general direction for council to consider at this time, with the understanding that council would provide further direction about which recommendations staff should continue to explore and develop with more specific implementation strategies. After your discussion with the task force, some next steps for council could be to identify areas you'd like or want to explore further, to identify areas where more data or information is needed, and then staff can bring that back at a study session for a more in-depth discussion. Or you could accept the work of the task force and take some time to consider the recommendations, and we could schedule a study session for a month or so and could have a more detailed conversation at that time. I'd like to introduce Sam Safi. He's going to come up and start the presentation, and the rest of the, the group up here is going to be the presentation committee, and Sam has information in his presentation which will introduce them. And then I'd also like to point out that almost all of this section over here is the task force members, so if you have any questions of them, they're here also.
There you go, Sam.
Thank you, Kathy. Good evening, Mayor Coombs and members of the council. Thank you for your time, and thank you for allowing us to make the presentation to you. As Kathy pointed out, her math is very good. We spend over 1,000 hours, roughly close to 1,500 hours, preparing and designing. We spent over 1,000 hours, roughly close to 1,500 hours, preparing and discussing. We had frank conversations about what is our role and what is the city's role, providing housing for those who work here. And so the slides that you will see, if you don't ask any questions, it will take 25 minutes. If you do ask questions, and we do invite you to have, we would like to have a conversation with you. So we invite you to, if you would like, you can stop me or stop any of members of the committee, ask questions, and we will be happy to provide answers. If we don't have the answers, we will get the answers for you. As Kathy and I both have mentioned, there are roughly 20 people, 20, there were 22 people, members of the task force, and I don't know how many people are here tonight, but I would like them to stand up to be recognized. Would you...
They're working on it, Sam.
Oh, okay.
Hold up the small slides.
You charged us to find solutions, come up with the strategies, and come up with recommendations of what the city should do as far as housing is concerned for the people who work here. We will come up with roughly a dozen recommendations at the end, and out of these dozen recommendations for you, there are four things which are very important to us. Mr. Mayor, you are welcome to test the numbers of the council at the end if they have paid attention to these four things. They will be repeated several times, so hopefully it will become very clear to everyone. So I will make the introduction. To my right, Diane Graff will talk about community involvement, how did we gather information from the community. We had lots of discussions, and Megan will talk about the needs of the time, as well as the program, how the program will be sustainable. What do we need to do to make it sustainable? To my left, Sandy Stewart from Our Center will talk about rental strategies as well as homeownership strategies. And finally, Wendy Pickett, who might, Wendell might be familiar to most of you, will talk about funding and how to fund the programs that we are going to propose to you. Historically, you might recall, Inclusionary Zoning Program was started from 1995, and you ended it in 2011. During that period, the new home, home builders, were supposed to put aside 10% of the homes, or if they didn't want to pay, put the 10%, build 10% affordable housing, they could pay for it. So during that time, 744 homes were built with that program. These homes had 10-year deed restrictions, which didn't work very well, by the way. $4.4 million was collected from the builders, and they didn't like that either. So you decided to end the program in July of, June of 2011. We gathered a lot of information, and we created five subcommittees. By the way, we did try these slides. They did work yesterday, so the system was working yesterday. Anyway, these subcommittees are rental, homeownership, funding, and then we put all the other things together, and we couldn't come up with a name after all this time, so we...
Point of order.
Yeah. Go ahead.
I don't know if it's a point of order, but do we want to postpone this, let them get the slides going, and deal with some of the other issues? I mean, they've spent a year and a half on this.
Yeah. Yeah.
Or take a break? I just don't want...
Thank you.
I move for a five-minute recess.
All right, let's do that. Thank you, Mayor.
Well, I'm going to sit down soon with the rest of the presentation and allow my colleagues here to take over. But there is one more slide that I would like you to review before we go. We discussed the AMI in detail and we decided to go with the Boulder County AMI. Because otherwise, we would have had to have one, either one full staff or half the time of staff. To have Longmont's median income. So the numbers that you see on this slide are from Boulder County. And this is the number we have been using. On the top, you will see the 100% AMI all the way down to 30% AMI. The number that you will be, we will be talking about is the 80% AMI. Anywhere from $45,000 income to $64,000 income for a family of four. I will let my colleagues to take over and at the end I'll come back and I will make the recommendations back to you. Thank you.
Good evening. Community involvement, as Sam mentioned, really began when the task force was seated in November 2011. We had a broad spectrum of perspectives from our community and from nonprofits, the business community, real estate, education builders and former beneficiaries were represented. Three methods of community involvement were developed for our strategic plans that we wanted feedback on. And as you see on the slide, we had good participation. We worked as a community involvement committee, October through April. And we had representation from each of the subcommittees. And each of us developed from our subcommittees strategic points that we wanted to get community feedback on. And we miraculously compiled a collective list of those points and added demographic questions. And with that, we rolled out our Option Power Community Involvement piece. We conducted eight sessions that ranged from having participants that were senior housing residents, affordable housing residents, realtors, the landlord symposium participants, neighborhood leaders, and a public session held in the city council chambers. Details of the Option Power report are on page A79 of your report and we'll have some notable results on the next slide. We also offered an online survey that we had 128 participants. The survey was active for three weeks. We sent out email invitations and advertised. And again, the details of the survey are included and highlights will be on the next slide. We also included for the online survey, open comments. And they were collected and they're also included in the report. And then lastly, we had an open house in April in which we presented our draft recommendations to the public. They were, the draft recommendations were available ahead of time. And again, email invitations went out to all the city commissions and groups, advertised in the local paper, on the city website. And we had participants come with detailed feedback that they really wanted us to consider, which we did at subsequent meetings. And they were very heartfelt, so we revisited some of our topics with that. And again, those comments are on page A119. So the notable results, these were the results that had some, the really high percentage points. And there's a range because they're from the Option Power and the online survey. So we had 74% to 89% that agreed that it's an important value to have affordable housing to Longmont's lower wage workers and to have the choice to work and live in Longmont. Another notable result was 60 to 72% agreed that incentives should be provided to developers to increase the affordable units of housing. And then 52 to 60% agree that resources should focus on both affordable rental and home ownership. And then lastly, 53 to 57 agree to support some type of tax for affordable housing. Thank you.
Hello, I'm reporting on, from the subcommittee that discussed meeting the needs of the times and coordinating sustainable approach to affordable housing. The overarching value guiding this committee and the task force in general is that housing should be available to all economic levels so that those who work in Longmont can choose to live in Longmont. We believe this benefits both the community as a whole and the individuals who work in the community. The role of this subcommittee was to explore what needs to be built into an affordable housing program to make sure it stays viable and sustainable over time. Best practices show that sustainability means having the ability to meet the needs of the present without compromising the ability of future generations to meet their own needs. This requires planning, policy, and budget processes that take a long-term view of all costs and benefits as well as community values. It requires an ongoing data-driven assessment of many social, economic, and environmental factors. Regulations guiding an affordable housing program must be market-sensitive and encourage choice and address economic fluctuations. Longmont must plan for additional residential growth that creates an average of 50 affordable units a year while continuing to encourage the development of market rate rentals in order to meet the needs of Longmont residents and the workforce. This number is based on the historic production of affordable units and reflects a three-to-five-year timeline from conception to occupancy. It's important to note that this can't be achieved without additional funding and reflects the historic production of affordable units but does not meet the actual need expressed in the CSI report. It's also important that a variety of affordable housing types be dispersed throughout the city within each neighborhood planning area to avoid the clustering of affordable housing. Incentives should be available to the private sector to encourage cooperation and collaboration with nonprofit agencies to develop more affordable housing opportunities. Because local government has control over land use policies and public infrastructure investment, they're able to provide a wide array of incentives for affordable housing development. Incentives for affordable housing development include reducing the cost of building permits, fast-tracking builder applications, providing density bonuses and allowing flexible zoning, height variances, and smaller units, providing direct subsidies, and using federal and state grants. Thank you.
A question. The 50 units that need to be built a year, is this a total that would include Longmont Housing Authority, other nonprofits, Habitat for Humanity, and private development, or is it strictly private development?
I believe it includes all, yeah, it would include all of those things. Yes, yeah.
And I also had a question about the 50 units per year. For how many years? Because we are bound by an urban growth boundary and we can't grow forever, so how many years are you looking at?
We're trying to build in flexibility so that that can kind of be determined as we go to make sure that the program's flexible enough to keep reevaluating those kinds of things. And I think the number, the 50 units and a timeframe will be discussed more in the funding part, how we kind of came up with the, with some of the numbers.
Thank you.
Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor. Question I have goes along with the 50 units and along with the permits and things. Where the 50 units, and I've mentioned this to several nonprofits before, there's existing stock that is on the market for sale. Could those be refurbished and used, and be used, be refurbished and used for the 50? Was that thought of?
I think, yes, yes, I mean, I think we're open to.
Because what I've heard before from a nonprofit is easier to build than to refurbish. Sam, I'm going to need you to talk up at that mic. Or get that one.
One of the recommendations you will see at the end is that to make sure that the affordable housings that are coming into the market rate, to be somehow controlled or monitored at a minimum. So we, the city will not lose the availability of such housing. The other part where we are going to talk about again is we really didn't want to give you solid or rigid recommendations. You want it to be as flexible as possible. Therefore, depending on the time, you will decide whether this year the budget should go here or should go back.
I was just wondering if that idea had been kicked around?
Oh, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, there's no more questions in the queue, so continue.
Here's the recommendations of the Rental Strategies Subcommittee. Our overarching goal is to assist lower wage earners in obtaining affordable rental housing, which can be done by building new units, maintaining the current affordable housing stock, and minimizing the loss of existing affordable units. CSI, which is the Community Strategies Institute, did a study for the city of Longmont in the summer of 2002 and found that we had a shortfall of 1,449 units in the 50% and below area median income. Could I have the next slide? Rental vacancies were at 20% in 2008 and now the city is seeing the vacancy rate is about 2.2. CSI reports that a healthy vacancy rate for a community is at 5%. You can see from the chart, well, it's, that we lack rental units in all income levels. Rental property is at a premium in our community and affordable rental property has become even harder to find. I work at the Aris Center and 75% of the clients that come to the Aris Center work. In 2012, the Aris Center saw over 16,000 households and assisted 163 families with rent vouchers to prevent homelessness. Many of these people work in service to our community in low-wage service jobs. They are the cashiers, the cooks, the health aides, the janitors, the day labors, the gas station attendants, the childcare workers, the house cleaners, and the paras in our schools. Even though they work, they struggle to pay the rents in our community. They attempt to pay on an average of $794 a month rent while making a wage of $8 to $12 per hour. Our clients are rent burdened. They are paying more than one-third of their income on housing and many pay up to 50% or more. They are hardworking and they're doing jobs that have to be done. And I believe we have to help those who work here find a decent place to live in our community if they choose. The Rental Strategy, it shows the deficit is about 6,617 units overall. About 50% and below were lacking 1,449 units and then it shows. So all levels of rent for people in Longmont, whether you're making 50% below the AMI or you're making 101% of AMI, lacks rental housing. Now we're moving on to homeowner strategies. We would encourage council to spend the majority of the funds on rental strategies, but we would like to see income-eligible individuals and families be provided assistance for rehab loans and down payment assistance in homeownership. Because we recognize that homeownership is good for the families, but it's also excellent for our entire community. Any program designed or created for homeownership needs to provide eligible families and individuals the ability to enter and exit the program. And as a value of the Workforce Housing Task Force, we recommend that there be a policy of no need restrictions for individual homebuyers using the Affordable Housing Fund.
And from the Funding Task Force, you've heard from my fellow task members, the need, the challenge, and the community values brought forth from the members of the entire task force. The Funding Committee, in addition, developed and proposed the following values, which were refined and adopted by the committee. In general, the fund should support housing. And in that statement, we allowed for redevelopment and revitalization, which would go to answer your question, trying to build in that flexibility, Councilman Santos. It needed to be broad-based and supported by the community. And it needed to work as patient capital that came back into the fund in the form of a loan. So it wasn't one-time grants where it whittled away the fund. But over time, it came back into the fund to then be redeployed as the city gets reinvented, as it gets redeveloped, as it grows, so that that fund continually revolves. Right now, there's a little more than $5 million out at work there. And as you'll see from our proposal, we propose adding to that. So the question is money. How much and what amount and how to get it, in short. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. So we suggest, recommend to you, to use the existing framework and infrastructure that's in place, that works, it has a history of working, and we don't need to reinvent the wheel there. We set an annual goal of funding $1 million in new principal to achieve that goal of 50 new units on average per year to be put into the affordable housing pool. We understand the need was larger than we could fix, but if we chose, we could make a difference. And we tried to rise to that occasion of meeting that goal of 50 units, which was both historical and what the report indicated. We came about that million dollars, what it would take, by reverse engineering with Michael Reese and David Gregg's help and everybody that sat on the Funding Committee, we reversed engineered the cost of doing projects from all of our different perspectives to come up with a model. It came up that it would take approximately $20,000 a unit of cash, support, and additional support from the city in the form of fee waivers and policy encouragements, which we've talked about, such as density or height variances. We feel that would then bring it into the market. We kept our proposal at an additional $10 million of funding because we believed after a lot of discussion that having $15 million in principal working in this trust fund revolving around would support an ongoing basis of affordable housing in the city. And that we also wanted to encourage the leveraging of these funds, which has been demonstrated by the Longmont Housing Authority so well. So then, the fundamental question is, how do we do it? How do we go for it? Our first recommendation is to ask you to go to and ask the people for a vote to approve the tax, be it a sales tax or a property tax, to generate $1 million a year of new revenue to be deposited in this fund. If it's a sales tax, it's seven tenths of a penny for 100 in gross sales, or .95 mils is what the math worked out to be. The third option that we put up there is to, you know, prioritize new sales tax streams, similar to a TEF or that kind of a concept that we felt staff could work out, what sales tax to earmark for that. And the last would be to shift funding from other things as, you know, when we put all the options on the table. But that's what we would recommend to you, is to go to the people, ask them for their community support to support the Housing Task Force fund.
Sam?
Mr. Mayor, would you have questions for Sandy and Wendell, please?
One question, is it possible to consider a combination of two or three at the same time?
Absolutely, Mayor. I mean, we, you know, one of the things that's been brought to my attention after this was all published, which was a good idea, was, I mean, there is a thought process among some that, you know, you could go and actually build a bond and fund the whole $10 million upfront and have actually, unless your payments get into today's interest rates. There's a whole menu of those kind of ways to achieve the $10 million target. We tried to focus on what we thought was manageable and doable.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Whit?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. So the $1 million a year is for this 50 additional units? Am I understanding that right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Need, those who need the fund will come to the city and will borrow the money at a below-market rate. So the money will come back to the city eventually, and therefore, the fund will be a self-revolving fund.
You've already done that with some of the funds with Michael Reese and the Longmont Housing Authority.
And that would be with the Longmont Housing Authority owning the...
That would be one vehicle. There are other, there are other entities that you could do that with, there are other programs. You might do something as Mayor Putnam Santos recommended in doing it, either purchasing of houses to go into a fund. It might be some other entity that does that. It's not limited to Longmont Housing.
Councilmember Levinson?
So there is some, did you do a risk analysis of some of these items also? Because I know that the council in the past has been asked to forgive the repayment of loans because, you know, the nonprofit entities, you know, requested that as an extra thing because they've had longevity in this kind of work in the community. So future, while this might be a good idea, future councils have the flexibility to just say, we're not going to put money back into the fund that, you know, if there could be a project that's insolvent, as there had been recently, the money wouldn't be going back in. And so we wouldn't have that sustainability piece. I would also ask that we look at the reverse engineering method because a lot of what will happen is infill development. That's a much higher cost. And so I'd like to make sure that whatever method we are looking at, that we do the analysis saying, you know, if a land, and as you end up with a shrinking supply of land resources, the price of land goes up. And so at some point, no matter how dense you make something, the density would have to be very extreme to make up for the increased cost of land in the future. So I might also suggest that we maybe look at a way of doing some land banking somehow. And also, if there's, there's great risk in all the different items that the council's been asked to consider for increased taxes going to the ballot, like the parks maintenance and future construction. At some point, we will be taxing ourselves out of our sales tax. Our, you know, there's a very finite amount of additional sales tax we have, and we could get caught in a real difficult situation where there's going to be, on the ballot coming up, there'll be several taxation issues. And my concern is that doing the sales tax, which is a bit regressive on lower-income people, you know, that pay a higher percentage of their income in sales tax, it would seem almost unfair for the equity piece to have people that would be taking advantage of this program actually paying a higher percentage of their take-home pay in taxes to support it. So I'd like to make sure we understand the equity issues involved as well. And then the last thing is, when we're looking at in new developments, I know there's been some challenges in other parts of the country with HOA fees escalating. And even if something is acquired by a nonprofit, the HOA fees in a building, if it's a multifamily with some owners, you know, individual units being owned, or in a, an HOA community, the real challenge is people being able to afford increasing HOA fees. And then sometimes there's been a strategy to keep affordable units out by HOA communities of constantly escalating their HOA fees, such as to make it unaffordable for people and forcing people out.
Councilmember Whit?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I wanted to just give you appreciation for all the work that's been done on this. It's been a mammoth task, and I understand the, how much information that you had to go through and how much time was required to come to consensus on these recommendations. You've done your work. Now it's time for us to do ours, which we're not going to do all tonight. But I think that this will be, we'll have to divide this up over several study sessions, unpack it, and discuss it more thoroughly. And I would hope that those who were involved in the separate subgroups might be able to come back later and share your expertise when we're kind of unpacking that, that piece. But given that, I would like to move that we accept this report.
I'll second it.
Thank you.
Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor. The only other question I have, Wendell. Why $10 million?
Why $10 million? Well, there was already $5 million that's out of work.
Sorry. There's already $5 million roughly out at work, and in doing some work with Mike and Kathy, and we felt that once we added an additional $10 million, which we were roughly targeting in 10 years, that the timeline, when you kind of look at a timeline and you say, okay, about every three years, you've got a project that rolls out or a series of smaller projects. And as this money builds out and goes to work, starts to create this role with already, what's already out there. So that at that point, it starts to become self-sustaining. Now, there, you know, there could be more work done on that, but like Councilman Levinson said, I mean, we were already at the point of a whole lot of assumptions and building a rough model, and at some point, you say, we have so many assumptions, it's models of no value. Because it's so much guesswork, throwing, you know, darts in the dark, as to exactly how that would roll out. And trying to predict, what, 20 years out or 25 years out? What we want to do is give you guys a framework that got money set aside, that was usable, that was coming back and forth. And while Councilman Levinson makes a lot of good points about future councils not being bound, that's just one of those additional risks in trying to give you a framework, you know, how do you control a group you can't control?
Well, and Councilmember Levinson brings up some really good points. We have, if I remember correctly, the wastewater treatment plant bond election going up in this upcoming election. Who knows what other entities are going to put up, other taxing ballot measures up. And I find it interesting, and I'm skipping ahead or behind, that looking at the chart of the rental units, you were here previously, Wendell, we were talking about rental units before. When was the last time we built a large multifamily rental unit in Longmont?
12 years ago, and then cotton started. And I think that chart is, just from a personal perspective, it's very clear that we need housing stock across the board.
True.
It's not just low-end, it's not just affordable, it's, we need to encourage housing stock across the board. Because as we do that, that will then create room below that as new stocks brought on, as people move into it in all categories, we'll make the pie better.
Because what's happened is people that can afford higher end have moved into the lower end and...
They don't have a choice.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Gregory?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I want to thank Councilmember Whit for making that motion. I guess the, I want to be clear, though, on what it means to accept the report. My understanding is accepting the report, maybe I'll make a motion to add this definition, is that we are saying, thank you for a year and a half of work, and we accept your hard work, and we will continue to discuss and analyze, not that we are saying, city staff, move forward with this report. So I move for a friendly amendment that we incorporate my definition of accepting the report into the current motion.
Gladly. Councilmember Henry?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I also do want to make it clear that I would like to see this come back in a study session so we can go through it piece by piece and develop our policy surrounding your recommendations because there's some really good ones here.
Councilmember Levinson?
I had a, an additional question around the difference between the Boulder County AMI and Longmont city-specific. And I guess, I don't know if, we might have to consult some other kind of housing expert on this, but at what point, when those two numbers diverge, if they become more than 20%, you know, difference between what the Longmont number is, we have to, so my point is, we still have to keep an eye on the Longmont number because if Longmont becomes a donut of decreasing incomes and the incomes in Boulder County increase quicker than the incomes in Longmont, then using the Boulder County index actually makes it a little harder for people in Longmont because then they're competing with people at a higher AMI than what the, what the reality of Longmont is. And I think the point would be that we want to make sure that everybody to, from maybe 0 to 50% of AMI is our target, especially when that AMI can be very different. If it's more than 20%, then we may have to relook at what we set. We have to continue monitoring that number because if the difference is too great, then we're not really serving the needs with accurate, with accuracy.
When we discussed this in 2000, we had the numbers from 2012, and they were very similar, maybe a few hundred dollars difference. But if there is any other one, any member of the committee who might know the exact number, I would invite them to say so.
You know, I think you've kind of sketched this, that the regulations must be market-sensitive to encourage choice to economics. So you've kind of built that into your core thing already, that we're supposed to be able to use this report to basically react to the market conditions. And that's what was wrong with our previous housing policy, is we couldn't react to market conditions. So I appreciate the fact that you thought of this upfront. Thank you.
And then my, my last comment is that I had a pretty significant discussion with one of the vice presidents of the Brookings Institute in Washington in March when I was visiting, and he was their in-house housing expert, had worked at HUD, and he told me that the federal government is pretty much going to get out of the housing business. And so when we're looking at the recommendations with a rosy picture of leveraging grants from the federal government, that probably is not going to be a reality in the future. And I think one of the best things we could do moving forward with your help would be to see if there isn't something we can do at the state level to start informing the discussion around workforce housing needs and what state policies there might be that could, with the federal government probably exiting this, these type of programs altogether, what can we do to be proactive, maybe, to let the state adjust what they do and maybe to the benefit of our community and others? So if the, if the work's going to fall on the state, the shoulders of the state, we could probably be significant in assisting with that, the new policy directives.
Come on, Anne. Yeah, before I end, come make a statement. May I read the recommendations now?
Yeah, sure. Go ahead. Go ahead, Anne.
The question about the AMI, if you turn to page 812 in the report, you will see why we made the decision to go with the Boulder AMI rather than one for Longmont. It's explained in there, I'm not going to go through it, but that's what the answer is to that.
All right, thank you. All right, would you like to finish the rest of your recommendations, your presentation?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Coombs, these are, of course, repetitions, so you will excuse me, but the slide indicates that we are requesting a, we are recommending to have $1 million a year for this revolving sustainable fund, up to $10 million, and then it will, of course, any revenue that has been generated, any system of revenue should be sunset after we reach $10 million. We also recommend that you will allocate the majority of the fund to the rental rather than the homeownership. We purposely did not want to give you a particular percentage. We would like you to have the flexibility to change that as needs come forward. However, we do suggest that you will continue with down payment assistance and homeowner, homeowner education. We felt that is needed in our community. We felt that we should recommend that you will continue helping or... Uh, we felt that he, uh, we should recommend that you will continue, uh, helping or, uh, sustaining somehow the nonprofit homeownership programs. And number five, uh, the deed restriction, we discussed this a million times, and we felt that, uh, there should be either no deed restrictions or minimum deed restrictions in any programs that you come up with. We feel that there might be, we discussed that earlier also, that, uh, there might be an occasion where the affordable rental units become available for market rate units. And therefore, we recommend that the, uh, the city should monitor these, uh, number of houses that are available, which might become, uh, market rate. Uh, number seven, uh, the program should, uh, emphasize the rental units for folks who are at minimum, at, uh, 50% or below, uh, 50% AMI. Recommendation number eight, uh, we, uh, we discussed this in detail, that the, if there are complaints, the city should react and ensure that the rental units meet the minimum requirements and minimum standards. Uh, again, we have discussed it tonight, and we discussed it among ourselves in detail, about 50 units, uh, a year. Uh, the last, the 11 years that the, uh, inclusionary zoning was available, that on the average, and we had good years and bad years, uh, on the average, during that 16 years or 15 years, the city built 48.5, to be exact, uh, number of houses, affordable houses. Uh, and so we recommend it, that's where the number comes from, the 50 unit comes from. Uh, we, we, uh, discussed that we, no one wants to have a, uh, low-income corner of the city, and therefore, the, uh, affordable housing should be dispersed, um, all around the city. So, uh, it should not be within one particular school, uh, section. Last and, but not least, uh, we recommend that, uh, you invited the, the city should partner with the private sector, uh, so, and the nonprofit, uh, to encourage more affordable housing. These are easier said than done, we recognize that, but that's why we have elected you to help us out. Let's go to conclusion, please. No, actually, okay.
Well, just briefly, uh, because we had a diverse representation of the community on our task force, we also then had the opportunity to have varying opinions on recommendations. Um, but we adopted early in our process, a consensus model. And, um, the method was everyone can live with a recommendation. If not, then the item went to a vote, and majority would carry the recommendation. And so on the next two slides are eight minority opinions. Um, we put all minority opinions for a final vote. Um, there were no further minority opinions collected after that final vote. And, um, when the votes were tallied, uh, we had as few as four, um, supporting a particular minority opinion, and as many as nine. Um, so we've included the minority opinions in our report as well. Thank you.
Mayor Coombs and members of the council, we come to our conclusion, and these are the four questions that, uh, we, we, uh, discussed earlier. And it, these became important to us, that those who, uh, work here should be able to live here. That is a value that, uh, we really, uh, believed in. And there was a consensus on this particular point. As we pointed out, there are, there is a shortage of 1,449 housings for the folk, for folks who are below 50%. Uh, but there are also shortages for people above, above that, including all the, all the 100%. So even if we could somehow build houses for, I'm going to excuse the expression, the rich folks, then the, the pressure would be lifted and, uh, from the folks on the bottom, therefore, the renting will, will go down. Uh, again, we discussed the 50 unit, this becomes a magic number, I suppose, uh, and the $1 million a year. Now, uh, I beg for your leadership, sir and ladies, uh, that you express, exert your leadership on finding this $1 million a year. Not, not from taxes, necessarily, but we gave you the option. Uh, we gave you a basket of options, uh, that you will find this $1 million from savings, from, uh, shaving off other, uh, programs. Uh, as a businessman, we talk about efficiency. So you have now a new, uh, city manager. Uh, he, he has, he came to talk to us, and I have talked to him personally. Uh, I believe that he can be very efficient. And, uh, I might put in words in your mouth.
All right, well, thank you.
So, uh, this is our final note. We would like to thank you for your time and for the opportunity that you have given us. But we have one more slide, if you don't mind.
Okay.
I would like to thank those who helped us. A thank, a heartfelt thank to John Clark, Michelle White, Kathy Fedler, Sally Randy, Janet Sultan, and Molly McElroy. These folks were really, uh, worked hard on behalf of the city and on our behalf, as well as they tried very hard to be, uh, fenciders or facilitators. They did not make any decisions, and that was, uh, very unique. So let's go back to the, uh, previous slide. This is our recommendations, and we thank you for it.
Okay, thank you. I would like to speak on behalf of the entire council. Uh, I think all of us really appreciate all the hard work that you and the staff and all the volunteers, um, it was a great job. And I know how difficult it is to, uh, to get to collaboration, and so it really says a lot about the leadership on your, your whole, uh, panel, to work together like they have to. So I appreciate it, and our entire council appreciates it, so. Hi, I, thank you. All right, let's, uh, vote. Passes seven to zero. Thank you.
All right.
Thanks, we're ready for a second meeting.
Sure, we'll bang through.
The next item on your agenda is, um, presentation in public hearing of recommended budget categories for the 2014 CDBG home and affordable housing fund programs. And again, Kathy Fedler will be making this presentation, but it looks like she's switching out books, so. Okay.
Hello again, council. Kathy Fedler, CDBG coordinator. So tonight, we're also here to do a public hearing and to present the recommended, um, budget categories for the 2014 CDBG home and affordable housing fund, um, as we move forward into allocating funds for 2014. The budget that was proposed to you, um, is recommended by the Housing and Human Services Advisory Board from their meeting on April 17th. Um, and we are looking to, um, hopefully do a, um, quicker, not a quicker, an earlier, um, housing process, uh, CDBG process this year in order to, um, match up with the work of the Housing Advisory Board who's working on the human service, um, analysis, needs analysis, and are going to be making recommendations to you about that process. So we're flipping and putting CDBG home, et cetera, first to help out with their schedules. So, um, this year, we're planning for, as we always do, a 20% reduction to our estimated 2013 CDBG and home grants, even though Congress has not yet approved or appropriated the 2014 budget, and in fact, we still don't have our 2013 funds at this point. Um, planning for a 20% reduction should be a worst-case scenario, and there may be, may be more funding available when we get to actual funding recommendations later in the year. Um, the proposed, uh, CDBG budget allows for competitive funding to be made available for nonprofits, capital improvement projects, reinvesting in the community. It recapitalizes the neighborhood revitalization program, um, recapitalizes assistance for existing homeowners to maintain and improve their homes, um, which was one of the recommendations of the task force, to continue housing rehab. And it recapitalizes the small business loan fund and allows some, uh, funding for competitive housing project applications, particularly from the Affordable Housing Fund and the Home Program. Um, the budget, uh, as I kind of indicated, does take into consideration the recommendations of the task force, providing as much funding for competitive housing projects as possible under the existing funding scenarios. However, should council wish to provide additional direction after hearing these recommendations or at a later study session, um, we could, um, bring back a revised or amended budget at the June 11th council meeting, if that's at all helpful, um, in order to still stay within our timeframe, um, for the Housing and Human Services Advisory Board. If you really wish to push this off and, um, wait until after you've had more discussion on the task force recommendations, I think we can accommodate that. It's just going to kind of push the Housing Advisory Board, uh, Housing and Human Services Advisory Board's schedule pretty, pretty tightly. Um, it is estimated, um, from past data, that over one, uh, 1.1 million in other federal, state, and local funded, funding would be leveraged by our anticipated CDBG and, and home funds. The information that was provided to you does, um, include information on where we stand with our timeliness, um, standard, and what we anticipate spending in 2013, and what would be available going into 2014, and, um, does provide information on the more specific, um, set-asides for, um, CDBG home and affordable housing fund. So I'd be more than happy to take questions, or if you want to have the public hearing, or however you want to do that.
Are there any questions for Kathy? I don't see any, so I think I'll just go ahead and open it up for public hearing. Is there anybody from the public that'd like to speak at this time on this issue? I guess, seeing that one, I'll close the public hearing. Councilmember Levinson.
Thank you. Um, Kathy, have we ever done any numbers on, um, return on investment for the, uh, use of CDBG money for the economic development, not just as far as, um, you know, the sheer number of jobs that we've created, but also how much, um, additional investment businesses have made, um, when they get some of those, um, either the revolving loan fund or, um, the investment in CDBG into buying, uh, equipment that increases their, um, their hiring capacity?
Uh, Councilmember Levinson and, um, Mayor Coombs, um, not specifically in that area. Obviously, as you indicated, we do track, um, jobs created. Um, we also track at the beginning when the loans are made, um, if our, um, investment partner is, um, putting in funds also, so we do know that information. Um, we do ask if the business is bringing in other funds at that point in time. So we would have, at that point, most of them are not. They're, um, really just getting either our funds or, um, Colorado Enterprise Fund or a blend there. Um, but as far as down the road, we have not done anything. I think that is something we probably could ask, um, Colorado Enterprise Fund to start tracking for us.
Because, um, if there are certain assets that the business has been able to acquire through the use of the, the loan that CDBG, um, uh, supports, they'd be paying additional, um, personal property taxes and, and that sort of thing. So that, having, tracking some of those numbers would just be useful to, um, look at, uh, different, uh, the difference in economic activity, and then those other, um, taxes that would be paid by businesses that, that support the economy and, uh, revenue in the state and city would be nice to know, because that's a different kind of, um, we, we send money out, and then money comes back in, and it's not just the, the leverage, but the additional assets that have value, um, regardless of, of, uh, you know, the, the loan gets paid back, but the asset still is there, too. And the jobs hopefully still stay there.
Okay, I don't see any further discussion, though. I just want to make a motion. Councilmember Gregory.
I move that we approve the recommendations of the Housing and Human Services Advisory Board.
Second. Okay, passes seven to zero.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mayor Coombs, your next item is ordinance 2013-16, a bill for an ordinance authorizing the city of Longmont to lease the real property known as Vance Ram Municipal Airport Hangar parcel number four to CAG International, Inc., doing business as Elite Aviation. And I believe that Tim Barth has a short presentation on this.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Tim Barth, city's airport manager. Before this evening is a lease called a FBO, a fixed base operator lease. Normally for lease, we don't usually do, uh, presentations for lease, but this is kind of a special lease, uh, the lax of which a city council has not seen since 1991. So it's been several years before we brought a lease like this, uh, forward for the council to consider. A little background, I know I have a tendency to throw out some acronyms and some terms like FBO and fixed base operator, and what do those mean? We're going to take you through a little bit of that tonight in a brief presentation. In a nutshell, a fixed base operator is the backbone of the airport. It's the business that provides all the services to the airport. They fuel aircraft, they train people how to fly, they rent aircraft, they sell pilot supplies, and anything that is aircraft-related or service-related to the airport is run through an FBO. Currently on our court, we have two FBOs, Air West Flight Center and Twin Peaks Aviation. In 2011, Air West Flight Center's lease expired, and working with the city attorney's office, we agreed to have a, have that lease extended on a month-to-month basis for two years while we figured out what we were going to do. Of course, that was in the height of the master plan that we went through. During those two years, the owner of Air West Flight Center told us that, uh, because of medical, medical conditions and personal health reasons, that, uh, he would no longer be able to perform the full services of the FBO, and he asked the city for help in finding a replacement. So to that end, we issued an RFP nationally, and we selected Chippewa Aerospace, who'll be doing business as Elite Aviation. We're kind of excited about this. Uh, when Chippewa came on board, even though we had two FBOs, our second FBO, Twin Peaks Aviation, which is housed in the city building, uh, my office, for those of you that have been there, uh, was able to also reach an agreement with Chippewa for the purchase of that business. So as we move forward through the summer, we are going to consolidate from two FBOs to one FBO, and we'll have one provider on the airport. One of the great things about this, and I think you'll see this in the, the presentation this evening, is, as we went through the master plan, we talked about making improvements at the airport, and we are on the cusp of that now by bringing in a new FBO. Our level of service is going to change dramatically at the airport. It's going to be more customer service, and it's going to be a more friendly environment to those that fly into the community for either pleasure or business purposes. It's really opening up a whole new avenue for us, and we're pretty excited about it. So on our selection process, we chose Chippewa Aerospace Group, and Julie Myers is here tonight. She's going to give a brief presentation of what their business is bringing to Longmont. They're currently based in South Carolina, and they also have an FBO in Hopkinsville, Kentucky. And I think as she takes you through her presentation, you'll see some of the changes that we can expect at Longmont. So when she's done with her presentation, Julie and I'll be going to answer any questions you have.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Mayor Coombs and, uh, members of the council, thank you for your time tonight. Um, uh, Ms. Witt, you'll be happy to know I've pared this down quite a bit since the last time, so we will make this a brief overview of Chippewa Aerospace Group, uh, our background, what we do, and, uh, the customers that we have across the country. Chippewa Aerospace Group is a aviation services company based in Conway, South Carolina, which is, uh, approximately eight miles west of Myrtle Beach. Uh, we are headquartered in a 20,000-square-foot, uh, facility that houses a roughly 5,000-square-foot, uh, square feet for engineering and professional space, and the remaining 15,000 is, uh, manufacturing space. Chippewa Aerospace, Inc. is the design, certification, and manufacturing side of our business. Uh, essentially, we take... Essentially, we take aircraft parts, we design or reverse engineer parts, we certify them with the FAA, and then we manufacture them in-house and sell them to the airlines. The second division of the company is Chippewa Aerospace Services, and this was a derivative of our certification business. Because it is so specialized, we came to understand that the airlines and the corporate modification market needed specialized mechanics to do these installs. So we have teams of five to 10 members who travel across the country doing installs for our customers. The third division, Elite Aviation, is the FBO side of the business, which is strictly, as Jim said, a fixed base operation that provides fueling, aircraft rental, flight instruction, anything in that category at the airport. The pictures you see before are basically of our headquarters in South Carolina and our wall of fame. Those are actual certificates of products we have certified in our 10-year history. We were incorporated in July 2000, and right now we have certified over 250 products on various aircraft. This is the management staff of Chippewa Aerospace. I'm the president. Mr. Charles Myers is our senior engineer and also vice president of the company. Ms. Nicole Tarrell, who is our HR manager, Mr. Travis Burzak, our flight department manager, and then Mr. Derek Van Dyke, who oversees the FBO operations. For 2013, this is our, the what's left of 2013, our proposed timeline for finalizing the transactions here in Longmont. We have finalized the transaction with Twin Peaks and are in process and hope to close on the remainder with Air West in the next eight weeks. Once we do that, we are beginning some short-term improvements in both locations. One for Twin Peaks actually starts next week, so that we will be pretty by the time the expo rolls around, and so that the public can see some of the new items that are being added to the airport. 2013, we will develop and finalize plans for a new terminal to be built at the airport, which will house a full terminal for the FBO that will be first-class for any customers coming in, flying in, personal or pleasure or business. We will, we began seeking opportunities in the local community to host events at the airport. One of the things we do in Hopkinsville this coming weekend is we host the hospice gala at the airport, and one of our regional airline customers will actually fly an airplane in for a static display during the event. So it is, we get very involved in the communities in which we operate, so we look for ways to involve the community, not just the flying community, but everyone, and share our passion that we have for aviation. We will continue to work with the city of Longmont's leadership to initiate grant funding with the FAA and the state of Colorado. We will also begin paperwork for a Part 145 repair station, which is a certification by the FAA to do a higher level of service on aircraft. And we will, at some point, begin transitioning small regional jets on a one-at-a-time basis to do modifications here in Longmont, which will bring additional revenue in terms of pilots coming to town, spending money in the restaurants and hotels, in addition to the additional jobs we'll be creating for modification teams. 2014, we see finalizing all of the outstanding plans and beginning construction of the new terminal, evaluating charter feasibility for the Longmont area, evaluating funding opportunity, I'm sorry.
That's a welcome center, right? It's a welcome center, right? Yeah, welcome center.
Evaluate funding for WOS capabilities, which is just other opportunities to bring in more pilots into the area, reassess new economic development opportunities with the airport, as well as additional hangar space that may be needed. As I said before, we do get heavily involved in the community, Veterans Affairs, Civil Air Patrol, Humane Society, local school fundraising. We want the community to come out to the airport. The new facilities that we are going to propose building at the airport will provide first-class facilities visually, and we will incorporate green construction during that process. And not only will we look to fill it with businesses that are aviation-related, but we will provide some future growth for other businesses at the airport. This is just a collage of our facilities in Hopkinsville, Kentucky. It's just to give you an idea of the space that we operate of there and what we would tentatively look for size-wise here in Longmont. Investment and capital improvements, as I mentioned earlier, the short-term cosmetic upgrades will be 25,000 to 35,000. Those will be temporary through 2013. Once we begin construction, we're looking at 800,000 to 1.5. And then at some point, there'll be an additional maintenance hangar and T-hangers being constructed on the field as well. In summary, the top, I'm not going to read it word-for-word, the top little blurb you see there is out of our original business plan and our mission statement as an organization that we adhere to the values of our company and that customer service is always first. We pride ourselves on being on time, on budget with our programs, and we keep our customers happy. For those of you that are not heavily involved in aviation, it is a very, very small world. With all the airplanes that are flying in this world, I can walk across any convention and hear the same names every year, because, and it's from small airports like Longmont to multi-international airports like DFW. So we, we make sure that our reputation is outstanding across all levels of the products and services that we offer. And one of the things that Longmont offers is that it is centrally located for our existing customer base. We do business all over the world, all over this country, and we wanted a base on the west side. Mr. Myers went to the Air Force Academy, so he has spent a lot of time in Colorado. We come out twice a year skiing, so Colorado's where we want to be. And we will invest in real estate here in Longmont at some point. It was very interesting to hear your, the task force numbers. For someone who is actually looking for someplace to lease, it's going to challenge, I can tell you. So the FBO will be supported by a corporation that has been in business for over 10 years with a successful reputation, and that we will always commit to continue to reflect all that is uniquely Longmont. And that's all I have. I'll be happy to field any questions you might have.
Thank you so much. That was a pretty thorough presentation. Looking forward to you being part of this community.
Thank you very much.
Any questions for council? Okay, I guess I'll open this up to a public hearing. Is there anyone from the public that'd like to speak on this issue at this time? I guess seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. Councilmember Whit.
I would like to, first of all, thank you once again for coming out and giving your presentation so that everybody knows the upgrades that we're getting out at the airport. We're very excited and very glad to welcome you to Longmont. And with that, I would like to move ordinance 2013-16.
Okay, let's vote. Passes seven to zero. Thank you so much.
Appreciate your time. Mayor Coombs, your next item is Resolution 2013-45, finding a parcel of land known as the North Star Annexation, generally located north of Plateau Road and east of now Audubon Drive, eligible for annexation. And Don Burchett is here with a short presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Coombs. Members of council, Don Burchett with Economic Development. And tonight, we are here to discuss the first of two items that relate to the North Star Annexation. The first one tonight is the second resolution that you have before you right now. The second resolution is a state statute requirement that the city must meet to show that the property is eligible for annexation and that we can annex it if the council chooses to. So this is the second resolution that makes a finding that it meets the Contaguity requirements and all other state statute requirements for annexation. By approving this resolution, you do not annex the property. The annexation would be considered at a public hearing for the ordinances scheduled right now to be June, the second meeting, or the first regular meeting in June, if you approve the ordinance on first reading tonight. And that's all that I have for a presentation, so I can answer any questions.
Is there any questions? Okay, I'll open this up for public hearing. Is there anyone from the public that'd like to speak on this issue? I guess seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. Councilmember Whit.
I would like to move Resolution 2013-45.
Second. Okay, let's vote. That passes seven to zero.
Mayor Coombs, your next item is our Resolution 2013-46, public hearing regarding a resolution finding a parcel of land known as the Quail Commercial Center Annexation, generally located north of Quail Road and east of Main Street, eligible for annexation. And Don Burchett again.
Good evening, Mayor Coombs. Members of council, Don Burchett, Economic Development Department. If I could just insert this name into the last description, that would probably be the best, other than the first ordinance will be heard in June, not tonight. So that's the only difference. The ordinances for the annexation will come before you in June and not tonight. And if you have any questions, I'm here.
Okay, I don't see any questions, so I'll open this one up to public hearing. Is there anybody from the public that'd like to speak on this item? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. Councilmember Santos.
Thank you, Mayor. I move Resolution 2013-46.
Okay, let's vote. Okay, that passes seven to zero.
Mayor Coombs, next is your consent agenda.
You know, I know we've been going on for a long time. Can we take a 10-minute break?
Sure.
And then we'll, okay.
You ready for consent, Mayor?
Yes.
Okay, your consent agenda. Item 9A is ordinances 2013-17, which is an ordinance amending Chapter 9.6 of the Longmont Municipal Code on Medical Marijuana, and Ordinance 2013-18, an ordinance prohibiting the submission, acceptance, processing, or approval of any permit, license, or plan related to or the establishment or operation of any business that invites, accommodates, or permits possession or use of marijuana. Item 9B is Ordinance 2013-19, which amends Title 11, Chapter 16, Section 040, 050, and 060 of the Longmont Municipal Code regarding review and hearings for parking infractions. I'm sorry, both those first two ordinances and this next one are scheduled for public hearings on June 11th. Ordinance 2013-20 makes additional appropriations for the expenses and liabilities of the City of Longmont for the fiscal year beginning January 1st, 2013. Public hearing is scheduled for June 11th, 2013. Item 9D is Ordinance 2013-21, which amends the 2013-2017 Capital Improvement Program. Public hearing is second reading scheduled for June 11th. Item 9E is Ordinance 2013-22 and 23. Ordinance 22 is conditionally approves the North Star Annexation generally located north of Plateau Road and east of Mount Audubon Drive and zoning the property R1 residential low density. And Ordinance 23 approves the land use amendment to the Longmont Area Comprehensive Plan for the North Star Annexation. Both of these are scheduled for public hearing and second reading on June 11th. Item 9F is Ordinance 2013-24, amending Section 2.32060 of the Longmont Municipal Code to adopt an updated Longmont Area Comprehensive Plan, including amendments regarding community health and wellness. Public hearing is second reading scheduled for June 11th, 2013. Item 9G is Resolution 2013-47, granting conditional consent to Boulder County's purchase of land parcels in the Longmont Planning Area known as the Hoffman Farm Property for open space purposes. Item 9H is Resolution 2013-48, approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city and the United States Department of Homeland Security for a grant in the form of a hazardous material truck. Item 9I is Resolution 2013-49, approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city and Boulder County, authorizing a lease of the Boulder County Fairgrounds for a July 4th fireworks display. Item 9J is to approve submission and authorize matching funds required for Department of Local Affairs' grant for the replacement of Motorola Gold Elite radio equipment and eight consoles in the Longmont Emergency 911 Communication Center. And Item 9K is Ordinance 2013-25, amending Chapter 10.6 of the Longmont Municipal Code on Fireworks. Public hearing is second reading scheduled for June 11th. Staff would like to pull Items 9A and F for additional discussion and presentation.
Okay. Would anybody else like to pull any items? Councilmember Levison?
Let's see. No, I don't want to pull an item. I would like to make a motion.
Okay. Councilmember Levison?
I'd like to make the motion that we approve the consent agenda minus Items A and F.
Councilmember Bagley?
Could we pull K, please?
Sure.
Okay. I guess, can I ask one more question, Mayor?
Go ahead.
I guess my question is, when we...if city staff wants to pull one, and we're all for just go ahead and voting for it, do we still want to hear from staff?
Yes.
All right, just checking.
Okay, so we've got a motion to approve the agenda minus A, F, and K. And it's been seconded, so let's vote. Okay, that passes seven to zero.
Mayor Coombs, the first item pulled was the Marijuana ordinances, and Ben Ortiz is here with a short presentation.
Mayor Coombs, members of council, my name is Ben Ortiz, Lieutenant of the Department of Economic Development. I'm accompanied this evening by Chief Earhart and City Attorney Ed Yassus. I do have a presentation, however, if you'd just prefer for me to field questions, I'm happy to do that as well.
No, we want to hear your presentation.
Okay, very good, very good. Okay. So included in your packet are two ordinances. Ordinance O2013-17, which amends Chapter 9.60 of the Longmont Municipal Code by inserting recreational marijuana into the already existing code language that bans medical marijuana. Ordinance O2013-18 would convert the moratorium on marijuana accommodating operations or marijuana clubs into a permanent ban. So on November 6th, 2012, Colorado voters approved Amendment 64, which amended the Colorado Constitution to allow the limited possession and private consumption of marijuana for those 21 years of age or older. The measure passed statewide by 55 percent, and here in Longmont, the measure was approved by a 58 percent majority. By approving Amendment 64, the Longmont voters were theoretically saying that it would be okay for marijuana establishments to open throughout the state. What a lot of the voters don't...didn't quite understand is that by stating yes to Amendment 64, they also gave their...they also gave their locally elected representatives the authority to ban marijuana establishments by ordinance or referred measure. So they didn't really give blanket approval for marijuana establishments to operate, even if they believe that's the case. So marijuana establishments are defined under Amendment 64 as being one of four types of businesses. They are marijuana cultivation facilities, marijuana product manufacturing facilities, marijuana testing facilities, and retail marijuana stores. So again, Amendment 64 gives authorities to localities to ban marijuana establishments either by ordinance or by an initiated or referred measure. Amendment 64 also gives authority to municipalities to adopt appropriate time, place, manner, and number regulations. So there are likely some drawbacks and benefits associated with whatever approach city council takes. On the positive side, allowing marijuana establishments would likely open up additional business opportunities, and an undetermined number of vacant buildings may be put to use for marijuana-related businesses. As a result, there would likely be a corresponding increase in tax revenue and revenue in the form of marijuana application fees. Half of the state license application fees would be forwarded to the city. On the other hand, there may be a number of drawbacks. Currently, Colorado state law and federal law are in conflict with each other as they relate to marijuana's legality. The conflict may put marijuana cultivators, manufacturers, distributors, sellers, and their landlords at risk of prosecution under federal drug laws. There may be negative impacts on tax revenues to non-marijuana-related businesses as family friendly businesses in close proximity to marijuana establishments may suffer from reduced patronage. An established marijuana industry in Longmont may negatively influence the decision of primary employers to locate to Longmont. And again, this is all speculation. Marijuana establishments may add to the already heavy workloads of zoning, code enforcement, building inspection, and fire staff that would be required to inspect marijuana establishments and enforce the municipal code related to these businesses. Exhausted odors of marijuana cultivation plants and byproducts may adversely impact surrounding neighborhoods and buildings. So having said all that, what are other...some other communities doing? Well, in the council communication which was brought before you on April 16th, staff included a table compiled by the Colorado Municipal League that included actions by other communities in response to the passage of Amendment 64. Almost universally, the communities listed they either passed bans or moratoriums with respect to marijuana establishments and marijuana clubs. For the city working group assigned to the issue of Amendment 64 planning, there are two concerns we feel are worth noting. The first is the legal risk to city of Longmont employees that may be required to review applications and approve marijuana establishment licenses. And the second is the legal risk to local financial institutions that accept deposits of money earned through marijuana-related businesses...business activities. As evidence of staff's concern, a letter written by the Department of Justice to Governor Priscine Guiguar of the State of Washington was included in your April 16th packet. In the letter, the Department of Justice asserts that state employees that conduct activities mandated by Washington's legislative proposal that review and issue licenses would not be immune from liability under the Controlled Substances Act. This could include prosecution under federal drug laws. With respect to the banking industry, both banks and credit unions are regulated at the federal level, and any bank that accepts deposits of money earned through the sale of marijuana may be prosecuted for money laundering under federal law. And that concludes my presentation. Staff is recommending approval...approving both ban ordinances in your packet in order to observe how marijuana operations function in other communities and how other communities address the problems that arise as a result, especially for those communities that allow marijuana establishments. Lastly, staff would like additional time to learn the federal government's position in response to Amendment 64. Thank you.
Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I...I do think we have a duty to represent our constituents, and in past issues that have been voted on by our citizens, we have said that we would vigorously defend their position. I think perhaps we're not clear on what the position was when our voters voted for Amendment 64. So here is what I would suggest with Ordinance 2017. I would like to see us continue the moratorium on the marijuana facilities until the election is held in November of 2013. At that time, I believe there'll be a question on the ballot about taxing marijuana that'll come from the state. And I'd like to add a question to the ballot that simply states, "Do you want a marijuana cultivation facility, a marijuana product manufacturing facility, a marijuana testing facility, or retail marijuana store allowed within the city limits of Longmont?" If it's simply stated, the voters have a choice, and then we'll know exactly what they meant when they voted for Amendment 64. So I would move that and hope someone would second it.
Councilmember Bagley? First, I want to second it. Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I guess I'm going to go out on a ledge here. Surprise. I appreciate your input to council and your wisdom and your viewpoints. I didn't second that, as we discussed a little bit earlier. My thought and feeling is that I kind of like the...we've heard from many residents, constituents, et cetera, and...but I kind of view it a little different. I'm for the...I'm currently for the ordinance as it's written, and here's why. First of all, when we were at the council retreat, we saw that there was a lot of history to Longmont. We've been dry town. We've...we've been a dry town. We've prohibited alcohol in the past. We have liquor stores now. I don't look at this as necessarily decision right now what the voters want. I think that we, as a city council, we have an obligation to look to the future to figure out what kind of city we want. And I personally think that even though it's legal at a state level to digest and use marijuana and marijuana products privately, this ordinance doesn't change that. But I don't think that it would be in Longmont's best interest to start encouraging people to smoke more pot. I'm a criminal defense attorney. I'm a criminal defense attorney. I know that a lot of people aren't going to like this, but I deal with DUIs and I deal with people who are doing stupid things, not only on alcohol, but on pot. I've seen it a lot. And I don't want to send a message to my kids that it's okay to smoke pot. I might be in the minority. I didn't vote for Amendment 64, but as long as I'm in council, I'm going to send a message to my kids and the youth of this town that it's not okay to do drugs, period, full stop. And marijuana's a drug. A lot of the argument is, oh, but it's not as bad as alcohol. I don't drink. I think that's the message we should send our kids. It's not okay to use alcohol and drugs in excess and go party. And I think that by putting on the vote...the ballot, it might pass. I don't want it to pass. That's not the Longmont I want. The other thing is that it is illegal at the federal level. Now, a lot of times when people say that, I think, ah, you're using that as an excuse. The reality is that if we, as city council members, encourage city staff to collect sales tax, we are in violation of federal law. It's money laundering. It's...it's all...there's all kinds of problems going on right now. And last but not least, I think that...I just think that...I just think it's a good idea. I don't want it in my town.
Councilmember Levison?
So on this point about starting up these type of new businesses, you know, we've led the way on some other issues, and I think it's time to let someone else lead the way to figure out all the regulation. There was quite an interesting New York Times article the other day talking about Washington and Colorado and how do you start looking at regulating marijuana with the fact that it's still an illegal substance, Schedule I, under the federal drug laws? And some of the comments were, you know, there's a lot to go wrong with the regulations, first-level regulations, and it's harder to do it right. I'd rather take a wait-and-see attitude. I will not support a motion that puts another ballot question on at this time. I want to wait to see if the voters don't approve an increase in taxes, then the state's not going to have any revenue to look at doing the regulation. Some of the other issues that the article I read talked about is that we're not really qualified to handle packaging regulations and ensuring things are child-proved and getting to that level, which if we had a manufacturing or a testing facility, you know, we'd have to start setting standards for that kind of regulation. And I think that needs to be worked out, not by us, because we're not ground zero for this issue, for sure. The other thing is that, as Councilmember Bagley pointed out, and staff members, the banking industry, I think, can take care of itself, but under the RICO statute of continuing, supporting continuing criminal enterprises, the city could be liable under those statutes if we do support the continuing criminal enterprise. And I don't think we need to be doing that right now, so I'm not going to support the motion. I will support a motion that would keep a ban in effect for now, and we can always repeal a ban. So members of the public that are sitting out there concerned about this issue, when some of these things get settled and somebody else gets sued first, then we can learn from that experience and then do it the right way. The other point of it is that a lot of...when this business gets up and running, the only way people are really going to make money is to encourage a lot of consumption by a few people, just like with alcohol. And I think that the social problems that we would encounter would much...the need in our community for drug treatment and other aspects that we need to help mitigate the effects would be far greater than what we can provide through any tax revenue that we would collect locally, so.
Yeah, this is one of those issues that kind of keeps me awake at night. I mean, and to be honest, I voted for this not because I wanted marijuana shops here in Longmont, but because I thought it was a good idea to decolonize marijuana. But I'm one of the few people who probably read the whole thing and understood it. And, you know, if you look at the title, it's to regulate marijuana like alcohol. So I don't know, you know, does the 58 percent really feel that way? I'm kind of leaning towards...I like Barney's plan, that's why I second it. I'm kinda leaning towards, I like Barney's plan, that's why I second it, but at least I think we should be extending the moratorium until November, whether we have a ballot issue or not on that. But if we extend the moratorium until November, then we'll know whether the state's gonna approve taxing it or not. And then by that time, maybe other cities will have an opportunity to address this and we can learn from someone else's mistakes or successes. You know, a really wise council member once told me that it's not our job to basically protect people from their selves. I mean, it's our job if the citizens of Longmont want us to regulate marijuana like alcohol, whether we agree with it or not, that's our constituency. So I feel strongly that our constituency has perhaps spoken to us. But, you know, because of my confusion on why I voted, maybe it's not a clear vote, and, you know, that's why I kinda like the idea of getting a confirmation vote.
Counselor Mayor Santos?
Thank you, Mayor. Not so much a question for you, Ben. I guess a question for Jim. How would we audit an all-cash business?
That's a problem.
I do books for a living. And how do you audit, if the city were to audit a business, how do you audit an all-cash business when you can't see bank statements, deposits, what have you, credit card statements?
Mayor Coombs, members of council, I, you know, I don't know how we would do that. We'd ask them to provide any records that they could to us, but obviously there would be some challenges in doing that. So we haven't gone about trying to audit an all-cash business, so.
Yeah, you know, it's something that's always bothered me, because I keep hearing, and I've heard, and I've continued, it's the one question I always ask when people were pushing for 64. How is this gonna work at a bank? Because I got approached at a chamber event at a bank.
I would assume they still keep some sort of records of sales, ledgers of transactions, and that's what we would be wanting to see.
But if we were gonna regulate this as a business in the city of Longmont, you're gonna have those people that, I guess, would be honest and report every dollar, and you're gonna have those that aren't. You know, we have ways of auditing businesses that aren't honest and finding those businesses. You know, there would be no way to audit an all-cash business.
Well, again, bank statements are not the only thing we would look at, and I would assume other records are kept, so.
Okay. Yeah, thanks, Jim. The, you know, I talked to Councilmember Finley earlier today, you know. She makes good points. Councilmember Bagley makes good points. I'm not so much on the moral issue of, what you do in your home is what you do in your home. You know, I don't care. You wanna go, you know, drink a fifth of something, as long as you're not out driving, go drink a fifth of something. You wanna go smoke something, just do it in your home, don't go out driving. I don't look at this as from a moral perspective. I still have a problem that state law, a state amendment has superseded, preempted, and here we go with that preemption word again that we all know so well, preempted federal law. Had federal law been silent, we wouldn't be here. Or had 64 said, you, had 64 said, yeah, all cities had to have, have to have businesses, or we wouldn't be having this conversation. I'd be in favor of actually extending a moratorium to the end of the year. November doesn't give us enough time. I'm not, I would not be in favor of any clubs. I'm very wary of grow operations. I've talked to one gentleman. He said, "I could have a grow operation and do it right." But there are also environmental concerns. There's a lot of chemicals that are involved. But I keep, those people keep coming back and saying, "The money. Just think of the money that's gonna come into the city of Longmont." Well, just think of the administration changes, how the boots of the federal government are gonna come down on ya and potentially take everything away. You know, if I'm not mistaken, the state of Colorado has, when it comes to medical marijuana dispensaries, hasn't done a top-notch job of regulating that industry at all. In fact, they've got a very poor rating, from what I understand. And now we're, you know, by the voters, passed 64. And near the end of the legislative session, the General Assembly finally passed their regulations, which I really haven't seen yet. I would, I would be more in favor of extending the moratorium to the end of this year, seeing what the voters pass in November, as far as at the state level, and then circling back around and coming, you know, seeing what happens.
Mayor, may I, you know, for a point of clarification, Mayor Protem Santos, Mayor Coombs. We actually don't have an extension of a moratorium included in your packet. Both ordinances would actually ban. One would ban the clubs, and then the other would ban the establishments. We can certainly provide a moratorium extension on the existing moratorium we have currently, but the other, the other ordinance is to ban the establishments.
You know, since we've broken this out as two separate moratoriums, I think everybody's probably in agreement that the marijuana clubs is a good idea. We could deal with that one.
Is it a good idea or is it a good idea?
To ban, yeah. It's not really part of the, so we could separate that out if we wanted to and actually ban the clubs, because that wasn't really part of Amendment 64. Is that correct, Eugene? Yeah, okay.
Counselor Member Sauer?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Well, as I recall, we went through this when we were discussing medical marijuana. And I believe at the time, all of us received a letter from the general attorney advising us that even though medical marijuana was passed and is legal, we could be prosecuted for helping the distribution of the drug, because at a federal level, it's still an illegal drug. And I believe that Amendment 64 puts us in that same risk position. Would that assumption be correct, Mr. May? Or Mr. Yostis?
It's a very complicated issue. I think the letter from the Attorney General to the Colorado Attorney General's was included in the packet, or at least an earlier version. And I think it's hard to say precisely what you can do or can't do. I think that's part of the motivation for the ban. So I'm gonna try to duck your question, but I'll give you a direct answer and say, it's certainly an issue in play.
That response would be, "It depends," right? Okay. So, and then Amendment 64, as was voted on by the people, clearly states that municipalities can legislate or ban, legalizing it within their communities, in terms of pot shops or clubs, grow operations, et cetera. Not that individuals would be banned from possessing it or smoking it, but we, as a community, based on the terms of what was stated, we can and we have the right to ban it, and other communities have banned it. Now, I'm in favor of extending or coming back with an extension for the moratorium till we see what the state legislators came up with, because I haven't seen what they've come up with yet, or if they even make any sense, and to see what the voters accept or not accept in terms of taxing the product in November. I would not be necessarily in favor of adding anything to specify whether they want us to have them in town or not, because I think the original thing is pretty clear, legislate or ban. So I don't think we need to add that to it. But we do need to understand what, at a state level, is being legislated, what, at a state level, is gonna be taxed, so then we can have a better understanding of how we can proceed. The other issue for me is, you know, we just had our retreat, and we were talking about budgeting for the next year and how our city income is gonna be limited. And then to have to take funds to come up with legislation and enforcement and spend those additional funds on particularly code enforcement and policing enforcement seems to me that wouldn't be good use of city monies at this time, when we have more critical things that we need to address. And therefore, I wouldn't be in favor of allocating any funds towards legislation right now.
Counselor Mayor Whit?
Thanks, Mayor. I'm completely confused as what you want to have happen then. Can I get back in line?
Well, I said I will be in favor of an amendment to extend the moratorium, or to extend the moratorium, and wait and see what happens in November, and try to understand what legislation was passed recently and how we can apply that legislation locally, if that's what we choose to do. But not necessarily put it to the vote as to whether we want to have shops or grow operations or packaging operations or whatever else.
Counselor Mayor Santos?
Thank you. Ben, are we aware, Governor Hickenlooper sent a letter to Attorney General Eric Holder regarding Colorado's passing of 64. Has the Attorney General responded back to Governor Hickenlooper? Are we aware of that? That's been a while.
Correct. Mayor Protem Santos, Mayor, to our knowledge, no, we've not heard any direction from, from federal government at this point. The only direction we've heard was that President Obama would not expend federal resources going after the casual user, which means that everything else is still in play, as far as we know.
And the letters that we've seen sent to the governor of Washington State and the other letters coming from, was it Assistant Attorney General Walsh, I think that is, correct? Is that right?
Excuse me, that's the Colorado U.S. Attorney.
Colorado U.S. Attorney, excuse me. So, all right, thank you.
Captain, hearing everybody's discussion, I kinda think the best solution is to pass the 2013-18, which prohibits, or basically puts a ban on the marijuana clubs, but not pass the other ordinance at this point, but instead extend the moratorium to the end of the year and let things flush out and not, and I think that would be a good compromise consensus. Counselor Mayor Whit?
Again, we don't actually have a moratorium ordinance in your packet. These are both, these are both ban ordinances. So I believe we would need a direction from council to bring back a moratorium ordinance.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Counselor Member Whit?
All right. I've had a lot of discussions with folks who are upset because so many people voted for this, and my answer is, I think people voted for freedom. When they voted for that, they were voting for freedom. They weren't looking at the practicalities of what we, as a city, have to deal with. And I can respect their wishes and desires, but add to that the complications. And I think that, and I do understand the desire to give hope to these individuals who were really banking on the fact that they were gonna be able to monetize this and make money on this, and I can sympathize with that. However, my position from the beginning, ever since I got on council, has been the same. And my position is that I do not believe that commercializing marijuana is in the best interest of our residents. I'm not gonna say that people already have the right to smoke it, and I can't stop them. I can't, and I'm not going to try. However, I don't think that I want drug money in our city budget. So I just have, I have a problem with that, and there's lots of different reasons, but really what it comes down to is that for me. And although, you know, 58% of the population who voted might have voted for it, all those, I'm thinking of 0-2 18-year-olds didn't get to vote, and a lot of them were really upset when that passed. So I am okay with extending a moratorium, but moratoriums are really messy, and we keep having to adjust them and adjust them and adjust them. I think it's better to just put in a ban, wait till the traffic flies away, figure out what we've got, and then after things become more clear, then go back and make a change. But for right now, I think what we're doing is we're playing a political game and trying to placate members of the community who are upset, and really, in actuality, we're not doing anything different. We're just playing a game here. And I say, "Pass the ban. When things become clear, revisit it, and then go from there." But I'm not okay with deciding tonight to put something on the ballot for fall. I'm not okay with that at all. So that's where I'm at.
Counselor Mayor Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I guess the, I agree with you, Councilmember Whit. I think that we can't read the tea leaves, what's gonna happen in November, end of the year, moratorium, the way people meant to vote, how they did vote. We don't have the data. All we can do is vote our conscience as to what we think's best for Longmont. And regardless of how we vote, it's gonna upset people. Personally, I was in, in the morning when I swim, there was a school teacher who's looking for a summer job, and he joked that he was approached to go, you know, pick buds, you know? It's like minimum wage job. I don't see how medical marijuana is going to fill the coffers of the city and become a primary job source and, you know, just, I just don't see it. So I don't think anything's gonna change between now and the end of the year. On the contrary, I think that most of this year would vote to banning. I think we have the votes. Who knows what the council's gonna look like in November? So I'm with Councilmember Whit. I'd prefer just to go ahead and vote, pass the ban, and if information comes to us, we can always lift it. But a moratorium's just going to lead to the same discussion happening in December. The same constituents are going to be upset that we wanna ban it. Others are gonna be upset that we didn't ban it. It's not gonna change. I think we should just deal with it tonight, put the baby to bed, and move on.
Counselor Mayor Allison?
So I'll give everybody a little bit of personal experience from my past employment. I was one of the criminal docket clerks for the San Jose U.S. District Court. And so every year around October, the U.S. Attorney in San Francisco would roll out 300 cases of misdemeanor bank tellers, fingers, and tills. And it was to set an example. The federal government, you know, sets an example of people that they want to, you know, let everybody, you know, pay attention. So, you know, with all the cash transactions happening around the holiday period, they wanted to send a message every, every year. They did it. I processed, just in my jurisdiction, 50 cases that were all pled out. But the federal government is gonna pick somebody to make an example of, and I just don't want it to be us. And I just don't want it to be us. I also think that having a ban in place, we can lift it, but continuing to extend a moratorium is us saying maybe, 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 when there is really not a strong intention that we're ever going to really, in the near-term future, say yes. So I think a ban can be lifted. So I will vote for both ordinance 2013, 17, and 18 and no ballot initiative.
Counselor Maggie.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I would like to amend my motion to just extend our moratorium that we currently have and take away the question on the ballot. Although I do think, I do think that it's important that when voters vote for something, we give them what they vote for. And I think it's hypocritical for us not to do that. And we have vowed to do that in other cases where things have been not legal, clearly with our fracking ban. So I, you know, the moral high ground is kind of cloudy. I, so I would like to make that amendment to my motion.
Well, I'd like to clarify, first off, our moratorium is only on the clubs. And that, yes, it's only, we don't have a moratorium on the other part, on the other thing. So. I think it's better to withdraw and then I'll make a, okay, I'll basically withdraw my second from her thing. I'd like to make a motion that we basically approve the ordinance 2013-18, which bans the medical marijuana clubs. Okay, that's one part of it. And the second part is that, okay, let's just do that one. We'll just, okay, we'll just vote on that. So we've got that and let's just deal with that one right now. Okay, so let's vote on that. Okay, that passes seven to zero. The next, I'd like to make a motion that I think there's value in bringing back a moratorium on considering, you know, the sale of marijuana as, you know, regulated as alcohol. Basically extend that until the end of the year. I think that there's, because some things could be fleshed out by other communities. I think we could learn. I think that that's, and I also feel pretty strongly that if 58% of our citizens said that they want, I don't think we should slam the door on that right now until we get more information. I think that's a mistake and it's not serving our constituency. So I feel that we need to bring forward a moratorium to give us more time to flush out these issues. So that's my.
I've got a cutting plan. How about this? How about I move the ordinance to ban? We'll see if it passes and if it doesn't, then we'll go to Plan B. How does that work? Let's do that. Okay.
Okay.
So, hold on. But first, he didn't make a motion. What's the number? I can't swipe.
It's 17, 2013 to 17.
Okay, I would move ordinance 2013.
Seventeen.
Seventeen.
Okay. Any further discussion? Okay, let's vote on that. Alright, that passes four to three with Counselor, or with Counselor Member Finley and Samori and Mayor Coombs descending. So it does pass.
Thank you.
Your next item is ordinance 2013-24, updating Longmont area comp plan regarding community health and wellness.
Mayor, council, if staff didn't, we didn't need this one pulled, so if council wants to go ahead and act on this, we're good with it.
I would like to move that one.
We still have to make a decision though between which version A or B.
Let's do that next time. Let's do that next, on second reading.
Okay.
Shall we? Yes. Okay, so what's the number? I can't swipe. I made, okay, 24. I move ordinance 2013-24.
Okay.
I piled on the second.
Alright. Let's, any discussion? Okay. Alright, let's vote. Alright, that passes seven to zeros.
And Commander David Morris here to address questions on item K, which is the fireworks ordinance.
Commander, actually, Mayor, I haven't been given the mic yet.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. The, by the way, City Manager, that was, that one before was the one I was referring to. And can we just pass it? We want to be healthy and well, so. I guess the, I guess I have some concerns about the fireworks changes. And so I'm going to tell, send my concerns and the question is help alleviate them if you can, or can you alleviate these concerns? The first question I have is page two, line 16. Number four is currently in the ordinance, correct? Okay. So my first, number five, under 18, just the one that says during a fire ban declared by the governor, a fire ban declared by Boulder County, or an emergency, or a fire ban declared by the city manager. Then there will be a, so that's an automatic ban if the governor declares it?
Correct.
Okay, I don't know if I'm necessarily for that, because, no, he can, no, he can declare a fire ban, but that doesn't necessarily mean that fireworks are banned. There's nothing in there that says that. Last time, I remember that he declared a fire ban and then we had a political conversation here in the community whether or not we were going to have our fireworks. And basically, there was no fire danger whatsoever, said the fire department, and due to politics, we canceled our fireworks. I was totally against that. So I don't want in the future to just automatically, the governor says, hey, we're having a bad fire year, and then all of a sudden, we don't have fireworks. I don't think that's a good idea. Also, it's illegal if, so like if there's vacant land next door in number six, which is line 20, if it's next door and I've got like a vacant field that I don't own, but I technically, you know, I'm on the property, but I have no right to occupy it. If I'm lighting fireworks off in the dirt lot next to my house, you can be ticketed. It's not your property, but if, hey, anybody who, if I have a vacant field and want to light fireworks, I will file a trespassing charge if I want to prosecute. Next, on number F, on line five, on page three, it says, it is unlawful for any person to possess any fireworks other than permissible fireworks. What happens, we've laid Wyoming and Wyoming, and then the next week, I plan on going on vacation to Kansas or Wyoming. Well, that, you sure? We can have, we're allowed, we just can't light them off in the state. Uh, I'm not sure. But my point is that if that's the state law, that's the state law, then it's either, it's either duplicative of state law or it's wrong, in which case we're making a law that makes it illegal to possess them. And then line seven on page three, so if I have these fireworks, even though I'm not setting them off, if I have the commander here for dinner and he notices I've got a box of fireworks sitting on my table, he can take my fireworks. And so I guess what I'd like to do is get rid of all those things that I just said. I'm just, I'm just saying that, I mean, this is the law that we're creating. We need to be careful about how we're legislating. And I'd like to just, I think it would be just as effective to add in language, to get rid of the sections I just mentioned. And then just in G, which is line seven, page three, says, right now, it says, any sworn police officer, sworn firefighter may confiscate any fireworks in plain sight that are not permissible fireworks. Okay? I think we should add just a comment in the clause, so long as the confiscating, a confiscating police officer or firefighter has probable cause to believe that said fireworks were being lit off or something like that. So that if they're lighting fireworks, you can show up and take them away. But, I mean, right now, this basically ruins Fourth of July. I don't like ruining Fourth of July. So I'd like to have some comments and get your feedback before I make a motion.
Counselor Amanda Santos.
It's always the one who may be breaking the law you wonder about. Well, see, and, you know, you always wonder when you travel into Wyoming and you see the big signs say fireworks. And you always see the Colorado State Trooper at the state line waiting for those people to come back. And if I'm not mistaken, it is illegal to possess illegal fireworks. Doesn't say about lighting them off, you can't have roman candles. Now, I grew up in Texas, so I'm used to shooting fire, roman candles at each other. You know, not, not at the face, but you know, at the feet. But.
Or at the aloha.
No. But it's not permissible to have illegal fireworks, what the state calls illegal fireworks, in the state of Colorado, whether in your possession. I'm pretty sure about that. That's why that's in there. Now, your, your question regarding, you know, the governor banning, having a fire ban in the state, I thought I could understand. You know, because I was very upset that we didn't have the Independence Day fireworks that we were supposed to have. And hopefully, we'll do that this year. Hopefully, the fire danger won't be as bad this year. But that one, if I'm not mistaken, it is illegal to have on your possession illegal fireworks under Colorado state law.
You know, I kind of agree with not bowing down to a state ban, because fire could be, you know, the governor could say, well, 90% of the state is dry and he wants to have a fire ban, but we could have had, just had a big, huge thunderstorm over Longmont and be very wet and it could be very safe. And I think we should have the ability to decide ourselves whether or not we want to take that risk. And because that, also, we don't have forest fires around us, so we have very little likelihood of starting a forest fire around Longmont. So I think Counselor Bagley brought up an excellent point there. I do remember when I was up in Wyoming and I had a big, huge fireworks, that I had a picture taken of and I emailed it to Mike Butler, who said, don't bring that back into this state.
Counselor Maggie.
So I think that, it sounds like Counselor Bagley is trying to adjust the ordinance so that he can do a great sense in court someday. I think I agree with the, absolutely, see, just rewrite it all so it makes it easy. I agree with the point around the, that we should not have to follow the governor's declaration if that's not, that's, that's something in our judgment purview. We can choose to honor it or not. I accept that amendment, but not the other verbiage. And I think that, I live in a neighborhood where illegal fireworks are very popular. And for someone, for those properties where there's an empty field, you know, the property owner can't be there at midnight to, you know, call the police and say somebody's trespassing. And even, even that, if someone lights a firework off and it lands in your yard and it causes a fire, then that's still illegal. So I just want to make sure that we have some, well, I support the staff's verbiage as far as everything except for the one point.
Counselor Maggie.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I get, I support what staff has. My question is, how do you manage it and police it? Because generally, once they shoot off the firework, by the time you respond, they could be gone. So how do you control it?
If I'm understanding your question, part of the issue that you're dealing with in terms of the possession of fireworks is oftentimes you see the fireworks being illegally shot in the air. And when you respond, you may not see the next one go off, but they have a whole stack of them on the ground. So developing probable cause would be difficult because you weren't able to see exactly where the firework began, but you do see the fireworks in their possession. So that's where the subsection F would be beneficial for fireworks enforcement, that it's actually illegal to possess them as it is with the state law. They confirm that that is illegal as well. So, does that answer the question?
Well, kind of. I mean, in the past, I think what we've heard is that people call in and say, some, you know, say at a golf course, somebody's shooting off fireworks at a golf course. By the time the police gets there, the people that were shooting them off are already gone or have moved on to somewhere else. So how do you stop that from occurring with, with this in place?
I don't believe this, that the changes will necessarily stop that from occurring. We do other things like proactive, putting more police officers on the street during high fireworks times. We're teaming up with the fire department to do that as well. But this statute or these code changes won't actually keep that from occurring, but quicker response time certainly would. So if you want to add some more police officers, that'd be good.
Okay. And the next question is for Counselor Bagley. Why would you buy them if you have no intent on shooting them off?
Go ahead, Counselor Bagley.
Because they're pretty. No. You'd like to shoot them off somewhere else where it is legal. That's what I sneaked in. So I'd like to.
Go ahead, Counselor Bagley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I'd actually like to move that we, what's the ordinance? I move that we, what? I move ordinance 25 with the following changes, that we strike line 18, 19, and 20. That in line, or that in line one on page three, we change it to read the city manager, comma, after consultation with the city public safety chief, comma. That's it.
Second that. Counselor Amanda Santos.
That your 20 includes the, upon property, a person, a person has no right to occupy.
So you're saying line 20?
Line 20, page two. So you're striking 18, 19, and 20, correct? So during a fire ban declared by the governor, a fire ban declared by Boulder County, or an emergency, or a fire ban declared by the city manager. And then upon property, a person has no right to. And then consulting.
Well, I'll let you finish.
Counselor Bagley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Again, we already have laws in the books that address trespassing. We already have laws in the books, or this will, we already have laws in the books that prohibit fireworks at a state level apparently, as well as we're about ready to pass an ordinance on first reading that would prohibit the illegal fireworks that we're also scared of. This, line 20, the reason, again, I suggested we strike it because it's pretty vague. If they don't want you on the property, then you call the cops and have you arrested for trespassing. This would make it illegal that if you were on, if the police officer showed up, do you own this property? Nope. Do you have permission from the owner? Nope. Your dirt lot 20 feet from your house. It's making it illegal to set off permissible fireworks. If somebody wants to have you arrested or ticketed for trespassing, you can. Um, if somebody wants to have you arrested or ticketed for trespassing, you can already do that. Um, I just think it's unnecessary legislation that would cause an undue burden on our children at the Fourth of July.
Councilmember Levinson?
However, it might help a, a property owner whose property gets set on fire, um, that this piece of the code could have some additional prosecutorial leverage, perhaps, and, um, when you're looking at someone has no right to be on that property, to, I mean, it is part of what we do in the city with these laws is to, um, even if you're not home, um, you know, the police show up if your house is getting broken into, even if you, you know, have an alarm or not, or even if your neighbor calls and it says, "I think somebody's not there," that's, that, that's there, that's not supposed to be there.
Okay. Councilmember Santos?
Thank you. Uh, Mayor, I'm looking at a Colorado Legislative Council staff brief from two thousand and two, July second. Fireworks that are always illegal to use in Colorado, except for public and professional displays, firecrackers, rockets, including bottle rockets, roman candles, cherry bombs, mortars, and similar items such as M-80s. Anyone selling fireworks in Colorado must first obtain a license. Fireworks that cannot be used in Colorado may be sold with, within the state for export purposes by vendors with an export license. Anyone who purchases illegal fireworks in Colorado must possess, must possess an out-of-state driver's license and proof of valid out-of-state motor vehicle registration. An indivi, an individual with an out-of-state wholesale and re, or retail license may also purchase illegal fireworks. It is illegal for anyone not licensed as a display realtor, exporter, or wholesaler to bring any fireworks purchased in any other states into Colorado. Due to extreme fire danger, the Colorado State Patrol has increased its efforts into looking for fireworks that residents bring back into the state during ru, routine traffic stops.
Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Uh, I already said you won, Mayor Proton.
No, I'm just pointing it out for everybody else.
Uh, you, you win. You win, to be clear, but that's not what the motion said, so...
Okay. Got a motion, it's been seconded. Let's vote. Okay, it passes six to one. Uh, Councilmember Levinson descending.
Thank you.
All right, uh, we're done with consent agenda, um, general business.
The only item in general business is your medical plan request for proposals, and I believe Bobby King is here to start this off.
Good evening, Mayor Coombs and members of council. Bobby King, Chief and Resources Officer. We are here tonight to ask for your direction regarding how the city goes forward in terms of bid or no bid regarding our medical RFP. Since two thousand and eleven, there were different opinions on our last discussion that occurred the last time we talked about this at council meeting, in terms of how do we proceed at the conclusion of a two-year contract period, rate period with Kaiser. That period expires in two thousand and thirteen this year. So staff has submitted up proposed action in your packet. And so Harold, myself, and Vince will answer any questions you might have regarding, uh, how we go forward.
Councilmember Santos?
Thank you. Uh, Bobby, what are, what's the possibility that we're gonna get more than two responses this year if we go up for an RFP? What are the chances?
Um, Mayor Coombs, uh, Mayor Proton Santos, members of council, I think the probability, if we expand, uh, our bid in terms of plan design, uh, we can increase the probability of having more than just two bids. And if our, our process is longer than a two-year rate cycle versus a five-year cycle, it should also increase the probability of getting more than two bids.
Yeah. 'Cause, I mean, it seems like we're, you know, since I've been on council, and, uh, Councilmember Levinson's been on just a little bit longer, a few months longer than I have, this has been the, what, every two-year cycle. And it's, it's hard on council, it's rough on staff, because they're concerned who their insurance is gonna be, whether it's gonna go up, whether they're gonna have to change plans, change doctors. I, I would really hope that we have a longer-term contract with whomever.
Mayor Coombs, Mayor Proton, our proposals to extend that period to a five-year cycle versus a one- or two-year cycle to, uh, take into consideration what you just proposed, uh, and talked about, Mayor Proton.
I guess I, I agree. I think the four-year cycle, your option two is, in my mind, is what I would feel comfortable with. Councilmember Levinson?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I, I think that we just need to get some surety around, um, stabilizing our health insurance costs, because as we're looking forward to budgeting, it, it's extremely difficult to just have these little two-year increments. And, um, and I think it's not, frankly, the employees are the ones who this affects greatly, not us who are making the decision. And, um, for them to be able to plan in their budget what, um, they can for health insurance costs, they need some surety of, um, not having things go in waves. So, um, I would also support a, a longer-term view of this. And frankly, I, I think the evidence has, um, borne out the fact that if, um, we go out to bid every couple of years, and, and people that make the effort and extend a lot of effort to submit a, uh, what would be a credible bid, um, you know, not getting it, they're just gonna divest themselves of even showing up. And so, you know, effectively, we've turned over almost monopoly to the, the one or two people who are, um, we've narrowed our choices, in other words. So, um, I'd like to, to have that longer-term view.
Councilmember Santos wants, um, Bagley's...
Oh, it's fine. I, I didn't see him. I was gonna make the motion to go forward, so...
Councilmember Bagley?
That's all right. Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I guess, uh, uh, I think we've, at least I've had some conversations with you. By the way, you look great tonight.
Thank you.
You, you losing weight?
I am, sir.
Looking great, man. So, uh, thanks, Becky. Um, uh, the, uh, I guess the, 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 the real question that's gonna come up that we've talked about in private, and I'm sure that we'll wind up discussing in public, is we're gonna have to decide what's best for the city of Longmont. And I understand that there's a collision coming, and it was the same one that was discussed before, and it's either, do we support what is best for, as in, as we're employers of city staff, or are we looking at it as city council members, and we're looking out for Longmont's best interest? On one hand, you know, you've got Kaiser that, uh, is going to want, um, you know, city staff, it sounds like they like Kaiser a lot, if you, if you ask the typical city staff member. Then again, our community needs a hospital, and we need to support them. And so, uh, to me, um, we need to answer that question, and the answers are different, depending on whether or not we're looking at it as a, you know, we're employers versus politicians for our city, 'cause the answers are different. And so, uh, I would want to do whatever we need to, to get as much data as possible, options as possible, to allow us to try and to find a solution that would allow us, A, to support our hospital, and B, make our employees happy. That, that's what I'd like. So my question for you, Mr. King, in having worked with this for the last, you know, several years, um, what option, in your opinion, would most likely give me what I wanted, which is options? Several people responding to the RFP and being able to have a healthy discussion as to what's best for our community.
Mayor Coombs and our Councilmember, uh, Bagley, I'll let our city manager start that discussion all way in after, after he wins it.
Go ahead and go first, and he'll jump in.
Nice try.
That's why you get the big bucks, Mr. King.
I guess so. Again, we, we started conversations, uh, Mayor Coombs, members of council, uh, with LUH and Kaiser on May first. Now, those parties hadn't spoken since two thousand and seven. And we have a second meeting scheduled for June third to try to bridge those gaps and talk about what's possible. So I think those conversations initiating is, is a path toward that solution you're talking about, as well as expanding the types of plans that we bid for and extending the period of time over our, our bid process versus our, our, our contract or rate period. So I think with those things in motion will allow us to have that conversation, we get the economic value of the hospital for the city. We'll also get fiduciary responsibility to our employees and, and the taxpayers regarding what we pay for benefits. We, we know the sin of the world is for employee benefits. All of those three things have to be balanced. So those conversations are taking place. I think those three actions move us in that direction.
And so, do you, does it, so are you saying that regardless of what we vote on, my concern will be met?
I think we'll be engaged in dialogue to, to move down that path. Not sure your concerns are gonna be met, but I think the fact that we're talking to one another helps us move down that direction versus not talking at all.
If I put your back up against the wall further, and you had to pick one, two, or three, what would most likely result in those parties coming to an agreement that would allow everybody to be happy?
I still think option two, as we proposed.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Santos?
Uh, and then also, in the plan that we currently have, that staff currently has, there's three, can you go over the, the, the tiers for those members of council that haven't been around?
Sure. There's three tiers for, um, Mayor Coombs and Mayor Proton, Mayor Santos, members of council. There's three tiers for our program. Tier one is an HMO. Uh, tier two is a, a network provider option, and tier three is out of network, which has co-insurance and, and our premium co-pays to that. So those are the three options. But under the current program, employees that have the triple option can go between tier one, two, or three. They have flexibility to go through all three tiers. If you have DMO, you're really confined to tier one.
And roughly, how many members or percentage of staff are in, in the triple option?
Seventy percent of employees or members are in tier one, which is HMO, twenty-two percent in a triple option.
Triple option, in other words, means you can go, you can go to, um, LUH. So, so it's...
But actually, if I can jump in, that's actually part of the discussion, because the, um, the RAP insurance carrier, um, that exists in the triple option, um, LUH is actually out of network in that triple. It's not in that tier two, and it's actually part of the conversation that we initiated a month ago, in the sense of, is there a way that we can look at, um, the PHC RAP, them being part of that in the system we're in? They're part of P, my understanding is, is they're, they're part of PHCS, and so we're actually engaged in those discussions now for the current plan that we're in, um, and hope, hopefully it'll transcend into the, into the options that we get through the bid process.
That's my hope, that whatever, whoever comes about, there's always options for the employees to go where they would like. So I would move the re, uh, I move, uh, uh, excuse me, I move option two.
Sorry.
All right, let's vote.
There's water.
Sorry.
It was there, and then went away.
Okay, it passes seven to zero. Thank you, Bobby.
Thank you.
Okay, now it's time for final call, public invited to be heard. Is there anyone in public that would like to speak at this time?
No diehards.
I guess, seeing no one, uh, we'll close final call, public invited to be heard. So now it's time for, uh, mayor and council comments. Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, just like to congratulate all the high school graduates. Good luck, uh, and congratulations to their parents. And as a former council member would say, uh, it's summertime, or will be summertime, please watch out for the kiddos on the streets, um, 'cause they will be running around on bikes, rollerblades, uh, they're gonna be, they're gonna be running, running around, riding around on just about everything, so please keep your, keep your eyes out when you're driving your vehicle, so...
Thanks.
Councilmember Finley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I would like to announce my business of the week. We have a new business in town called Lucky's Market, which supports local, organic, and traditionally-made foods produced with passion, values, and community. They're located at seven hundred Ken Pratt Boulevard, so everybody, go check out Lucky's Market.
All right. Well, I guess I'm gonna follow, um, your lead and, uh, put a plug in for, uh, Yankee National Bank. Uh, I think that they're a tremendous asset to this community, and, uh, which I thought about today is, 'cause we, uh, paid our fair dues on today's. So, and besides that, they were the only bank out of the world that would lend us money fifteen years ago. So, uh, anybody else have any comments? All right, I'll close, uh, um, council and mayor remarks, uh, city manager, any remarks?
Uh, no comments, mayor, council.
City attorney, any remarks?
No comments, mayor.
All right, this, uh, meeting is adjourned. All right, this, uh, meeting is adjourned.